Are we ready? You're good? Everybody's good. TVs are good. I'm going to call the October 16th Planning Commission meeting to order. And we'll go with a roll call, please.
Commissioner Gatto.
Here.
Commissioner Hall.
Here.
Commissioner Zabriski.
Here.
And Vice Chair Paul V.
Here.
Chair Keelis is noted as absent.
And let's all rise for a Pledge of Allegiance. Like to move on to Agenda Item Number Four. Opportunity for public comment for any items not on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to make a comment, please come on up to the podium and state your name. And you have three minutes. Yep, just push that red button so we catch you on the mic and speak into it. And state your name, please.
Jesse Griffin. And I live at Truckee-Donner Senior Apartments. And when are we going to address the invisible population in this community? I've lived here 13 years. And we're losing people left and right to Reno. We need to build either more Section Eight housing and/or senior housing as fast as possible because people who have lived here and done their jobs for the joy of doing, helping people, have no housing. Our waitlist is three years. We need to do something now because our workforces are hurting and they're going other places. And what happens when we have an emergency? Not last winter, but the winter before last at the seniors. We're all electric. We were without power and heat for 15 hours. And the number one reason was the work crews lived in Reno and couldn't get here. We need to address that very quickly. Because second homeowners, yes. But hey, the invisible people need housing here in town. They contribute, they need to stay. That's all.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
So this is still on, right? All right. So my name is Svenja Ziegler. I'm a Truckee resident here. And I have a comment to the amendment to the Development Code. The section four, it says...
So if it's an agenda item, we're going to ask that you wait to that agenda item.
Okay.
This is for anything not on the agenda.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Anybody else? Public comments on anything not on the agenda? Great. I'm going to close public comment and move on to Item 5.1. Approval of the September 18th, 2018 Meeting Minutes. If anybody has any comments or corrections, please speak.
I'll make a motion to approve September 18th Meeting Minutes.
Second.
And roll call, Emily? And we got that change from those comments that I sent you previously, correct? Great. Thanks.
Commissioner Gatto.
Yep.
Commissioner Hall.
Yes.
Commissioner Zabriski.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Paul V.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along. Agenda Item 6.1. Town of Truckee Public Service Center Phase Three Application. Jenna.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Paul V. And good evening, everyone. So I will run through this relatively quickly tonight because it is a minor review item. It is the only one on for tonight's agenda. Obviously, if you do have any questions after my presentation, please let me know. So as I discussed in my staff report, this is a project that came before your body, although I don't believe any of you were fortunate to have been sitting in that position 10 years ago, actually this month. And so what you're being asked to do tonight is review what we call the development permit. And as I always mention, there are really sort of two decisions that you need to make. One is to approve the development permit request and make the findings to approve that. And then you make your sequoia determination. And in this case, you've got a prior mitigated negative declaration, or what I'll refer to as an MND throughout the night. And what we've noted in the staff report is that there are a set of mitigation measures that were applied to this entire project 10 years ago. And what you're seeing tonight is the last phase of construction within the public service center. You'll also hear me probably refer to the public service center as the corp yard. That's, those are two interchangeable words, or terms, I should say. So what you see here is the way the public service center exists today. So this, just to help orient everyone, this is Donner Pass Road as it crosses over Interstate 80. This is Highway 267 over here, and then this is Interstate 80. So it really is situated in that space between DPR and 267. And most of you may be familiar with this. This is the relatively recently constructed animal shelter. This is the Public Works Building, and this is the sand barn. And then what you see here is the existing fueling station. So what we're talking about tonight is the last phase of full build-out of the public service center. And then this is just a bigger site plan that shows you more detail. So again, this gray area right here is the animal shelter that was built maybe four or five years ago. The maintenance facility, so what I'll refer to as the Public Works Building is here. The salt and sand barn, so if you have young children and you've attended Big Truck Day, which plug for Big Truck Day is the Saturday, they may have been able to play on the giant sand pile that exists within that salt and sand barn. And then what we're talking about tonight are the construction of two new garages, one that we call the North Building, and then one that we call the South Building. And then this area to the far east of the site is where the snow storage area that we, as we collect throughout the town, that's where the snow is stored throughout the winter. So as I mentioned in the staff report, this is a project that was approved 10 years ago. However, due to a number of factors, the town did not end up constructing the last phase of the public service center. And what essentially happened is the entitlements that were granted in 2008 and which expired in 2014 actually did expire. And we now have to come back to seek additional approval for that last phase of construction. So it's two different buildings. The first one is about 17,500 square feet. Second building is just under 19,000. These are actually, the buildings themselves are slightly larger than what was approved many years ago, but other parts of the programming have been reduced. So there's actually less development proposed overall within the campus than what we saw 10 years ago. So little bit of history. I won't go into too much detail. I believe Dan Wilkins is going to talk a little bit more than what I included in the staff report. But to really understand that this has been a very long process, and it really resulted from a very deficient and inadequate facility that had a number of land use incompatibilities, most notably that it was located directly adjacent to residential units. And the nature of a public service center or a corporation yard generally creates some inherent conflicts there. So many years ago, the town embarked on a process to find a more suitable location. That was roughly between 2005 and 2007. And once we landed on a site, we then began planning for that site and trying to determine exactly what type of programming needed to be included in the eventual development. As I mentioned, entitlements were granted in 2008. Generally, between the years of 2009 and 2013, multiple phases of the project were built out, including the last phase, which was the animal shelter. And then, as I mentioned, in 2014, the permits for the garages actually expired. So that's again why we're here tonight. So I went through this very briefly again. This is the North Building here. So this is what the south elevation of the building looks like as it'll appear looking this way. And then this is the north elevation of the South Building. So if we were standing here and looking this way, this is how each of these buildings would appear from within the actual campus itself. I won't spend too much time on this. There's a fair amount of discussion within the staff report. So one of the two findings that you're always required to make is that the project is consistent with both the general plan and the Development Code. You'll see a fair amount of discussion in the staff report related to general plan policy. So there's a fair amount of discussion dedicated to really visibility from public view sheds, in particular from Interstate 80. As you saw with the aerial earlier, it is visible from Interstate 80 and 267. So there was quite a bit of emphasis placed 10 years ago on ensuring that a high level of vegetation was retained, that the lights that we were using are not visible from those rights of way, that they're properly shielded. We also worked to include some of the screening that we felt was needed, given the, you know, as you can see, the types of equipment that are being stored on this property. We wanted to ensure that those weren't visible from those public view sheds. And really, what we're doing tonight is the culmination of that objective, which is enclosing all of those large vehicles and pieces of equipment that we use, we'll be finally able to store them within a structure. And then there was a little bit of discussion, again, related to outdoor storage because that was one of the primary concerns, and the fact that portions of this site are within the town scenic corridor, and there are some additional protections in our code related to scenic quarter. So as I mentioned, we do have an environmental document that dates back to October 2008. That was a project-level MND. So all of the aspects of the actual project were evaluated at that time. There were a number of mitigation measures that were developed to address those impacts, in particular, the impacts that are related to lighting, view shed, landscaping, vegetation preservation, et cetera. And those were all focused on reducing those environmental impacts to less-than-significant levels. And what you'll see in tonight's resolution is the conditions of approval reflect those mitigation measures that are still relevant. A majority of them have already been incorporated into the campus because most of the construction and development is already complete. So there's just a handful that are left that may still apply. And what we've recommended tonight is that we do rely on that previous MND, even though it is relatively old in terms of a sequoia timeframe. We still believe that the circumstances that applied 10 years ago are relevant today, that the mitigation measures still work to effectively reduce those impacts. So we are recommending relying on that initial MND. If the commission isn't comfortable with that, we do have some potential alternatives for your consideration. So as I mentioned, we are recommending approval of this project. It is Resolution 2018-20. You'd be making two decisions. You'd be approving the development permit, and then you'd be relying on the previous MND. What you see on the right-hand side are several bigger-picture items that I just briefly wanted to focus on, and I know Dan will talk about this in a couple of minutes. Really, as I mentioned, the underlying purpose of relocating our previous location to where we're at today was to really address those land use incompatibility issues that we saw with a corp yard, you know, situated within a residential neighborhood, and also a corp yard that was situated right along the Truckee River that didn't have proper stormwater treatment facilities. So really, the town focused a high level of effort for a number of years to find a suitable location. What you're seeing tonight is the culmination of that effort with the last phase of construction within the corp yard. It's also important to understand that this development has played out, really in relation to some growth that the town has experienced over time. And what we noted in the original documents was that we expected to see phased development of the corporation yard as the town was growing. And I think what you're seeing tonight is that we now recognize we've got additional funding, and we've got interest in enclosing these pieces of equipment in heated structures, getting them out of the elements, really working to preserve the life of that equipment. So this has been, like I mentioned, a very long process for the town. Significant funds and staff time have gone into it. And I'm sure the guys sitting over there are going to talk a little bit more about the benefits of this project. What I just want to last close with is that it does have a very high level of architecture, even though it is largely out of sight. We do have a very good-looking corporation yard. If you haven't had a chance to visit, strongly encourage you to do that on Saturday. Got a beautiful animal shelter. We've got beautiful Public Works facilities that all were designed comprehensively so that they complement one another. And then the last thing is we do believe this is consistent with what was approved 10 years ago. There are very minor changes to the square footages of these garages. We don't believe those are creating any additional impacts. We think that you can rely on the mitigation measures that were originally incorporated in the sequoia document to ensure that those impacts are mitigated. So this is the usual slide that we always run past you. I'll spend a little bit of time on it. First, it's important to understand if there's additional information that you have either for us as the planning staff or those guys as the development team for the project, you are welcome to continue the meeting and identify what pieces of information you would like, and we can return at a future date with that information. If you think that that MND is no longer sufficient and we need to do additional environmental review, you can direct us to do that. Whether that's a higher level of environmental review or revision to that document, that's an option. And then the last one, we always talk about this, is that if there are any of the conditions that are within that resolution that you think need to be modified, deleted, or if there's additional things that we missed that need to be added, we can do that as well. And then lastly, if you don't believe you can make the findings to approve tonight, you always have the option of denying. However you go this evening, the appeal period will end on Friday, October 26 at 5:00. And then I am going to turn it over to the folks over there for a brief presentation, and then we can move into any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Jenna. Very good job on the presentation. Thanks for your consideration, commissioners. I'll first start. I'll introduce myself. My name's Dan Wilkins. I'm the Director of Public Works and Engineering for the town. I've been in that position for just over 20 years now. We have Brett Albert with us, who's our Fleet and Facilities Manager. Brett's been with the town for about 17 years? 18. Tom Ravy, our current Street Maintenance Manager, has until this Friday at 5:00, at which point he's retiring. And it'll be a party for him up in Towahdonner, if anyone wants to attend. We have Riley Morrison, who will be our Street Maintenance Manager effective Monday at 7:00 a.m., the 21st. We have Drew Jack, who has been a, who's in the Engineering Department. He's been a project manager on this project for the town. And Dan Olson, who is in the Police Department, and he manages all of the support services for the Police Department. Jenna did a great job of covering a lot of the background of the facility. I thought what I could touch on is our current operations and how they work between, because we're currently still operating between two separate sites. So Jenna spent a good amount of time talking about the new facility that we have mostly moved into. We do still have an operational presence at the old facility that we're in the process of transitioning out of. So we've got a couple of photos. This is one of the old storage buildings at the old facility. This is the old animal shelter that has been replaced with the new animal shelter. That's currently being used as a storage building. Those are no longer being used, but that was the storage, the types of storage facilities that we had when we were operating at the old yard. We were able to get rid of those at the time we vacated the old yard, but you know, that's an example of how we used to operate. That's a, that's a view of the townhomes that are directly on the parcel boundary of the old yard. I call it the old yard, but again, we still do use it. And we can go forward. That's another photo of some of the, some of the buildings and the equipment at the old yard. And then that's a, that's a view of the building in the up, can we go back one? That's all right. So the building in the upper left, the small brown office building, that's where our current transit operation is currently headquartered. So that's where our transit contracting staff reports to. We hire our bus drivers through a third-party contractor. The building on the right, that used to be a sand barn, what it now is, is our police evidence storage building. And then the building on the bottom is the building that our current, our bus fleet is housed in. We also have our Facilities Maintenance Division staff that utilize that building as their workshop, and it also serves as a storage building for Public Works equipment that we don't have indoor storage for at the new yard. So those are the basic functions that still occur at the old yard. Again, it's our transit operation, a portion of our Facilities Maintenance operation, and our police storage functions, as well as equipment storage. It's still occurring at the old yard. So what this project would do from an operational standpoint is it would allow those uses to be moved to the new facility. That's a, that's a picture of the inside of what I'm referring to as the old yard, you know, with some of the bus storage and some of the Facilities Maintenance work that occurs in there. What this project would allow us to do from an operational standpoint is move all of those uses to the new facility. And the two buildings that Jenna pointed out earlier are what are in front of you for consideration tonight. What that would also allow us to do is minimize the amount of running back and forth that happens with a lot of the staff, again, being based out of two points of operation, creates a lot of travel back and forth and the inefficiency that comes along with that. It would allow us to mothball those existing facilities. So all those existing buildings that, that we see, we currently have to heat those and keep them, you know, properly conditioned for their current uses. The buildings were constructed anywhere from the mid-1980s to the mid-1990s, so the, the energy requirements at those times were different than they are today. So the overall efficiency of those buildings is significantly less than would be the case with modern buildings. The covered storage function of the new building proposal really serves two purposes. One, it gets our equipment undercover. The other is that that was part of the overall screening strategy for the master plan that we developed for that yard. If we look at the site plan, to the north of the project areas, Interstate 80 corridor and off-ramps. To the south is the U.S. Forest Service property. To the east or to the right is the Highway 267 corridor. And then to the left is the Donner Pass Road corridor. So currently, the footprints of the buildings that are being proposed are areas where we have outdoor equipment storage that occurs. We're fortunate in that we were able to maintain a fairly dense tree screening, canopy screening around the perimeter of the yard. You do get peak views into the yard from those different roadways. When we master planned this site, the notion was to create the operational buildings that are most intensely used in the center of the site, and then put high-quality architecturally pleasing structures around the perimeter of the site so that we could use the buildings to screen the operations that are occurring. So the, the proposal that's in, in front of you tonight would enhance the screening of the yard by using the buildings to help screen the operation, which would, would have some benefit there, at least in our opinion. And then what it would also do is get the equipment that's relatively visible from certain perspectives and put that undercover where it would be less visible. So another thing that the project would do is it would help us to reduce the amount of vehicle idling time that we have. So with our current fleet, we've got a heavy component of diesel equipment that, when it's stored in the cold, there's a certain warm-up time to bring the equipment up to temperature before you want to put it out and put it under load. That provides a couple of benefits for us. One is it allows us to deploy to our field operations, which is typically snow removal in the wintertime. It's when we're using the bulk of the diesel equipment. It allows us to get out there more quickly, so that it improves the efficiency of our snow removal operation. The other thing it does is it reduces the amount of idling time for that equipment to come up to temperature because if it's stored indoors, it's, you know, preheated to a certain degree. And then the, I think the final piece of this is if we can be successful with this project, it allows us to completely vacate the existing facility, and then it creates opportunities at that facility for other community uses. There's been different ideas thrown out there. Housing has been one. A new location for the Rec District to house their maintenance operations, because currently the Rec District operations are in the middle of the regional park. They take up a couple of acres of what could be fairly high-quality park land or land that could be used for other purposes. That's not a part of this proposal. It's, you know, some discussions that have, a couple of ideas that have been discussed in the past. So we think that getting fully consolidated at a single location helps the town out from a service provision standpoint. What it also does is it creates some, some property that's currently on the river corridor adjacent to some existing high-density housing, makes that property available for other potentially more beneficial community uses. So with that, I'll stop. And myself and the other staff that are here from the town will be happy to answer any questions, if there are any. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Great. Let's move on to any clarifying questions from the commissioners. Commissioner Gatto down there, you want to start us off with any questions?
Excuse me, Vice Chair?
Yes.
Would you like to open public comment?
Um...
Oh, just kidding.
I was just following my instructions up here.
Fair enough.
(Laughter) Thank you, though, Emily. I will open public comment after we have some clarifying questions from the commission, just for anybody in the public who's here. I have a little cheat sheet here. First-chair meeting, so it's all good.
So this large vehicle building, that's the police storage down at the west end of it? Is that what I'm seeing? It almost looks like a separate building. I'm just...
Yes, so...
It's not just vehicle storage, it's some of that, and there's some other use for the extra-large vehicle garage?
Correct. The -- so there's the vehicle storage function, and then adjacent to that is the Police Evidence Storage Function on the building that's on the south side of the lot. Building on the north side of the lot, again, has vehicle storage component and an adjacent component that would house our Facilities Maintenance functions in the downstairs and house our transit operations functions in the upstairs.
Thanks.
Curious why the development permit's expiring? I thought we recently made a determination that if you've sort of exercised portions of the permit, there's not an expiration?
That was for a use permit.
Okay, got it.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Um, let's see. Is there an employee housing requirement for this project?
There was. I didn't talk about it primarily because it was related to the 2008 approvals, but there were some acknowledgements made within Frishman Hollow, which the town contributed to, where we set aside several units there for our workforce housing allocation. And at that time, the policy worked such that that made sense, and the commission and the town eventually approved that.
So in essence, that requirement's been met?
Yes.
Okay. And then the two remaining buildings, the extra-large vehicle parking and the large-vehicle parking, is there a plan to move forward with those?
So the ones that you see on the east?
Mm-hmm.
I'd probably turn that over to Dan.
That would potentially be Phase Four of the project. The two buildings that are being proposed at this time are basically the buildings that would allow us to relocate fully from the existing facility, and they're the buildings we can afford at the time. So we weren't able to get the budget approvals for all four of the buildings at this time.
Thank you.
Can I just tack on to that? You said Phase Four, so did we miss a phase? Because we're talking about Phase Two right now, so can you -- what's Phase Three?
Probably some difference in nomenclature. So what I was -- so the phasing, as I was describing it, the first construction phase of the project was the fuel facility, the maintenance building and attached office and the sand barn. That was one construction phase. We had a second construction phase that was the animal shelter. So then this would be a third construction phase. I think in some of the earlier land use approvals, the animal shelter and the corp yard was maybe referred to as Phase One, and then the rest of the buildings were Phase Two. So from a construction phasing standpoint, this would be the third major construction contract, this particular project.
Great. Thanks for clarifying. Thought we skipped a few phases there. Commissioner Hall?
Yeah.
You're good?
Thank you. Mr. Wilkins, according to the town of Truckee's 2016 GHG emissions inventory, the old corp yard, over the course of the calendar year 2016, emitted 90 metric tons of greenhouse gases, 90 metric tons of CO2 equivalents. And that was made up of electricity use and then natural gas. What's the projected greenhouse gas emissions under the portion of the project that's in front of us tonight?
I don't know. I haven't done those calculations.
Do you have an estimate?
Not as I stand here.
Do you know whether it would be more or less than 90 metric tons of CO2 equivalents?
So based on my, I guess, my knowledge of the operation of the existing buildings and the level of efficiency of those buildings, and my knowledge of the new facilities that we recently constructed, that these would be close to matching, my estimation is that there would be a rough equivalent in terms of total electrical usage. And I suspect from a heating standpoint, the existing buildings at the existing yard are all heated using natural gas. The new facilities would be heated with natural gas as well. We would have more efficient units, so I think on a per-square-foot basis, our emissions would be significantly less than at the existing building. However, at the new buildings, our square -- we have more total square footage. So I think that there would be a slight increase net in terms of, you know, so if we're able to reduce use at the existing buildings, replace that at the new buildings, it would be built to current standards. I believe we would still have a net increase in total greenhouse gas emissions as a result of the fact that the new buildings are sized to accommodate our long-term needs and are therefore much larger than the existing buildings.
What plans are there? Are there, if any, for reducing greenhouse gas emissions in connection with facility itself, this new facility?
So one component of the facility is that the northern garage building would have a row of solar panels on the south-facing exposure of that building. So that would provide, you know, renewable energy, solar energy, which would help to offset the electricity that we're drawing from the grid. So that's one component that's been included in this project. We have a companion project, and it's not a companion to this, but it's a related project, where we're performing an audit of all of our existing facilities in the town, looking at opportunities for energy efficiency upgrades. We're also looking at opportunities to expand solar generation at each of our facilities, so Town Hall and these facilities. At this particular location, one of the projects that are being evaluated through that other contract would be to put a row of pole-mounted solar generation -- I'll walk over to the screen -- along the northern boundary of what you see called out as a utility easement there. So it would be right.
Yeah, here.
Okay.
So that's an area that has favorable sun exposure. It's also located close enough to our existing facilities that if we were able to put solar generation in, we could tie it into our existing buildings on the building side of the meter, which then would effectively reduce the amount of electricity that we're needing to draw from the grid. So that would be another project at this facility that we're currently evaluating to further reduce greenhouse gas emissions.
Are the solar panels you're talking about, are these photovoltaics to generate electricity? Are they for heating, or which?
Photovoltaic for electric generation, electricity generation.
Could they offset the heating that occurs with the natural gas or the natural gas emissions in the facility?
I believe they would help. But since it's a natural -- since it's natural gas, it's providing the heating, they're not going to reduce the number of thermal units that the natural gas heating system is using. However, from a global standpoint, we'd be importing less power from Utah or wherever the power is being generated that comes in through the grid. So there'd be some benefit there, we believe.
Okay. The town adopted a resolution recently to achieve 100% renewable electricity for municipal facilities by 2020. Is there anything connected with this project, which is specifically directed at achieving that 100% renewable as envisioned under the town council's resolution?
So I mentioned the -- some of the solar opportunities that we're exploring. That's the -- I would say that's the primary area that we've looked at, how we can reduce energy utilization from non-renewable sources at this particular site. One of the items of interest that's not tied to this project, but that was tied to the original project, was that the heating for the office building component of the original project is actually derived from a ground source heat pump system. So that's basically relying on the ground to function as a heat sink in the summertime to allow the air conditioning to function properly. And it uses the ground as a heat source in the wintertime to keep the building warm. We explored the opportunity of using that same system to heat the garage buildings, but in our work with the mechanical engineering teams that we were involved with, they didn't feel that that would be viable, which was the reason that we're relying on IR infrared heaters for the garage heat source.
Can you tell me if there's anything that could have been done more than you've already done to achieve this 100% renewable by 2020, just in connection with this project?
I don't believe there's a lot more we could have done with these particular buildings. I believe that another opportunity on this site would be rooftop solar on the maintenance building that was previously constructed. So what I'll point to, yeah, that building right there, it's a building that's got great sun exposure, it's got a flat roof. At the time we brought this project through, and the sand barn is the same, the building to the right. At the time that this project was constructed, we actually had a full design for rooftop solar for both of those structures. We actually got construction bids on it. At the time, there was a decision made to construct the project, there was basically a lack of funds available at that point in time to construct that rooftop solar. I do believe that at this particular site, that's a topic that could be revisited in terms of having a significant area for additional solar generation, which would further reduce our energy, our net energy consumption on the site. And what I should have pointed out as part of my earlier discussion on the pole-mounted solar along the utility corridor, is that we would also be looking at that as a part of this other analysis we have of town facilities and opportunities to deploy more solar generation.
Okay, thank you.
You can come back up, Dan, sorry. One more quick question, and I think maybe just to build on what Commissioner Zabriski's talking about is, did the design, has this been the design since day one, basically? Or did, once everything expired back in 2014, did you guys go back and look at some additional options based on, you know, differing council priorities or advances in architecture or engineering or build-out or, you know, any of those things? Are you -- is this exactly kind of what was brought to the commission and council back in when the permits were first approved?
This is, I would say, 95% consistent with what was reviewed 10 years ago. We've done some minor finessing of the building footprints and the interior function, the interior design of the buildings to better meet current needs, you know, so the needs that were identified. And for instance, the transit, you know, housing, the transit function at this yard was not something that was built into our plan 10 years ago, because our transit operation worked a little differently then, where it was a contractor was responsible for their own office space, their own bus storage, et cetera. That operation has changed since then, which has then created a demand to have facilities that the town owns and operates to base the transit function out of. So that was a modification that was made. The solar array that's proposed on the front of the north-facing building, that's actually something that was contemplated in the design 10 years ago that we've maintained for this project. So I'd say that this is very similar, not identical, but very similar to the project that was reviewed previously.
And would the addition of the solar installs on that utility easement, would that change any approvals or project permits or anything like that? That'd be consistent with what we're reviewing? Great. One other question on just capacity. So if you're built, what kind of capacity will you have there? Will you be utilizing your full capacity? If those two were built out, or will you still have additional capacity for five, 10 years? You know, what's kind of your timeline on what's going to happen, how full it's going to be right from the start?
Right. So these two buildings will allow us to get all of the equipment that's currently stored at the old yard, all of the police evidence that's stored at the old yard, all of the transit personnel and equipment that's stored at the old yard moved to this facility. It will allow 80% of the equipment that's currently stored outdoors at this facility to be stored indoors. We'll still have some outdoor storage need at this facility. And again, that's a result of, we've got a couple of additional buildings in this overall site plan that would need to be implemented to get 100% of our storage undercover. I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, no, so you'd be at full capacity. You're going to fill it up. If it went once built, let's say, to your timeframe, you're going to fill it up right then on day one?
Yes.
That was my -- yeah.
Yeah. And what we'll probably do is we'll probably have a half of one of the buildings that's -- I'll refer to it as overfilled. So the design of the site was prepared with the notion that we want to be able to store the equipment undercover and be able to have reasonable access to it, where you don't have to move four pieces of equipment around to get to something in the back corner. I think the reality of how we'll use the site, since we would still have some equipment that would be outdoors otherwise, is we probably will take half of one of the buildings, pack it full of equipment that we don't, that's not mission-critical in the winter, for example, but that is still beneficial to have undercover, and then use the remaining three-quarters of the storage facilities as they were intended, where you can, you know, pull a loader in, pull a blower in, pull a grader in, a sand truck, whatever, have it parked, and then have easy access in and out of the building with it. So...
And what kind of timeline do you think you're on? And it's, as far as I understand from your comments, mostly budget-driven, but what kind of timeline do you think you're on for the last two pieces of the puzzle there?
I would expect that that would be at least another five years into the future. The one wild card there is there are some grant-funding opportunities out there from the Federal Transit Administration to build facilities that support the transit functions of the town. So if a grant like that were to hit, where we could build a building that could be dedicated to our transit fleet, which then frees up space in one of these other buildings, you know, it creates a kind of a domino effect, that could be something that would affect our timing if we had some free money that came in, not free money, but money from outside of the town's budget resources.
Great, thank you. Any other commission questions at the moment?
There's no building permits or anything issued yet, are there?
No.
Great. At this time, let's open it up for public comment. Three minutes, come on up if you have a comment. Seeing none, I will close public comment. Any -- we're good on questions, move into deliberation?
I have questions for staff.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm concerned about two things. One, Dan Wilkins has addressed on the factual issues of what we can expect in terms of greenhouse gas emission reductions with this project that's in front of us right now, and he doesn't know. It doesn't sound like a -- I didn't ask, Dan. I'm assuming that an estimate would be possible, that it is possible to estimate. possible, that it is possible to estimate what the emissions would be, and that that was not done. My, this leads into a concern I have. One is achieving the 100% renewable energy. This is something the town council, resolution the town council passed. I'm concerned that there wasn't more effort made to comply with that. A second issue is one of process, of procedure, and whether we are complying with SEQA in terms of our analysis of the greenhouse gas emissions. The mitigation deck that was done back in 2008 or before simply makes a somewhat cursory qualitative analysis that's to the effect that overall emissions should be less with the new facility than it would be with the old facility. And that is just, when I look at it again, that's just a form of a quantitative analysis that's incomplete. Since the 2008 negative deck was issued, there have been regulations adopted by the state of California in 2010, regulations for establishing guidelines for implementing SEQA were adopted. And under 15064.4 of Title 14, it says that a agency, the lead agency must make a good faith effort based to the extent possible on scientific and factual data, describe, calculate, or estimate the amount of greenhouse gas emissions resulting from a project. Now, this is a very small project, I realize. The old corp yard emitted 90 metric tons of greenhouse gas, of CO2 equivalents in 2016, and the new one is not going to be radically different than that. Given all that, though, it appears to me that the, a new analysis needed to be done. Put aside whether the 2008 analysis was sufficient or not, we now have clear directives from the state that we need to do more of an analysis than what was done. I would like to see this project go ahead, but I would hate to see litigation brought, which would put the project off to her three years. So I'm kind of looking to the staff to tell me why it is the analysis that was done is still good today, or what can we do to fix this to make it bulletproof?
Well, I think you have several options before you, and I can certainly walk you through what we think those could be. The first thing I would say is we, I mean, thus far, we've not received any public comments. Even our special, special district and utility providers generally haven't commented on this because it's already been an approved project. So we don't expect to have this project litigated. That being said, you certainly never know. So in, in terms of options that are out there, we could continue tonight's discussion and require preparation of a GHG greenhouse gas emission report, potentially revising that MND. That could potentially require recirculation through the state clearinghouse, that could be a several-month delay. The difficult part with this is we don't have a threshold, and I'm going to be a little planner-y at the moment, so please bear with me. We don't have an adopted threshold of significance, so we don't have a number that says we can't go above it, and if we do, then you have to mitigate. We just haven't gotten there yet. We fully expect to have that as we go through the next general plan update, and at some point in the future, we will have a set number that we can compare projects against, whether they're public projects, like the one that's before you tonight, or a private development project. So we could go through that analysis and come up with a number, and look at whether or not it exceeds or reduces the existing quantifiable number that we have from 2008 as it relates to the old corp yard. We could do that. There are actually a number of SEQA exemptions that are out there that this project wholly qualifies for. Normally, if I were presenting a project like this to you, I would have recommended a SEQA exemption, in particular, either the general rule exemption, that's 15061B3, you've probably heard us say that a lot, or the infill exemption, which is a Class 32 exemption. I didn't do that tonight because we do have this existing mitigated negative deck to rely on, which has a fairly high level of mitigation built into it. So we actually think that you're getting a higher level of environmental benefits associated with relying on a project that has an environmental document than if we were to move forward with an exemption. Certainly, that is at your disposal. If you do want to rely on exemption tonight, we would recommend that you continue the hearing, that you allow us to re-notice for next month, and that we reference whichever exemption you would like to move forward with. And again, we are fully confident that this project does fall within at least two exemptions, categorical exemptions within SEQA. And then lastly, probably the most powerful, and I'm calling it an exemption, but that's not what it is. It's the 15183, that's a SEQA section. Most notably, you may recall, we relied on this with the Rayleigh's project, so this Soaring Ranch, pardon me. This is when you have a project that is consistent with your zoning and your general plan and a previous environmental document. This is called streamlining. What this does is it allows you to rely on all that previous work that's been done in foregoing additional SEQA review. And this is actually a very powerful section of SEQA that mandates that a city or county do not do subsequent environmental review. We could also reference that, and this is a very legally defensible position that I believe we could rely on if we wanted to go that way. Again, didn't go there because I think it's beneficial for everyone to see the mitigations that are already required of this project. Most notably, that these structures are built to a higher level of energy, energy efficiency than would be required today. So there is an existing mitigation measure that directly correlates to GHG that was built into this project 10 years ago. These are just alternatives. We still think the MND is legally defensible. However, if you disagree, then we have a number of options that we could discuss tonight.
Thank you, Jenna. You're reminding me that the town recently received the Silver Level Beacon Award in Sustainability Best Practices, and you're to be commended for having achieved that award. And so my concern remains what I said before. We don't, we could have a threshold of significance just for this project. We don't have it. The qualitative analysis we refer to as really, this is a better project than if we stayed with the status quo, which isn't sufficient anymore under SEQA, the AB 32, or as other state laws that have been passed on greenhouse gas emissions. I would very much like to assure that we're in compliance with the law, and if by putting it off a month to do that, I think that's worth the effort.
It might be helpful, too, to have Dan speak a little bit about the timing component. I'm not sure we, if we take a different approach, which we can do, Jenna, and explain some of those alternatives to you, that if we're talking about going out and doing some greenhouse gas assessment work, I would guess that that's probably going to be about a three-month process for us. If we're talking about doing recirculation of the MND, maybe. We're not quite sure where your commission is heading with that. But there are some timing components of sort of our bid process that we have, and I understand the concerns that were raised. I just want you to be aware of that as you think through and talk through those issues.
Thank you. I understood, I heard somewhere that we're fully confident that an exemption would protect us, and that's what's still ringing in my head.
Mr. Wilkins, did you want to address anything that Danielle was referring to on the timing, or no, you're good?
It's up to the discretion of the commission, I could, but.
Okay.
So, yeah, so our current goal is to move the project into a construction phase in the spring of 2019. And we, so where the project is currently at is we've got building permit level designs. We've actually submitted a building permit application so that we could get the technical review on the adequacy of the plans. And then the reason we are that far along is these are actually fairly simple buildings, and, you know, they don't, I mean, they're, they're more complex than I would have expected them to be, you know, being a civil engineer and not an architect, but they, we ultimately made a decision, it was more efficient to just go ahead and have the architect team develop the building permit set, use that as the set that would also be provided to you for your consideration. So if we received approval tonight, our goal, or our schedule would allow us to put the project out to bid in early November, and then get a contractor selected early next year. Then that gives the contractor a few months to get the project organized, but also to get the building structures, which are pre-engineered, what's referred to as pre-engineered buildings. So it means that we haven't designed every nut and bolt in the steel frame structures. That would be the contractor's responsibility, and that's a, that's about a three, two to three-month process typically. So if, if we did receive approval tonight, what that would allow for is for the project to move into a construction phase in the spring. If it, if we didn't receive approval tonight, then, you know, whatever the additional time that was necessary to get the commission's review and hopeful approval would just kind of push that out, you know, directly. So, you know, an additional one or two or three months now would, would move a May start to a June or a July or an August start, depending on what the additional review time is. So.
Thank you. Yeah. One, I got one other clarifying question for staff, and again, it's building on Commissioner Zabriski's conversation here. What really is our role as, as a planning commission in looking at that 100% renewable goal? You know, you bring it up, and, and we're not given a lot of, we're just not given a lot of direction as to kind of what our role is in helping to enact that, really, and help get us there. And this would seem like an ideal opportunity with a, with a municipal building coming, a public building coming before us.
You technically don't have a role with that currently, but we've, we foresee that your commission will, once we have a threshold and policies and regulations to implement that goal. It's currently a goal, that's as far as the council went with it a year ago. So like I said, there currently isn't a mandate that's before your commission, at least in, in the way I read the, the two resolutions that the town has adopted related to this topic. However, we fully expect that in the near future, your commission will have a fairly significant role in implementing what we see are going to be new climate change and sustainability policies.
Yeah, it's usually easier when you have the policies to back the goals, and that's where we look at the opportunity with the general plan, which is why we wrapped in all of our climate action planning into the general plan update process. So we're a little bit in the interim, I would say, in that as we look at these projects coming forward, I think it's great that the commission is thinking in those terms, looking to achieve those goals on behalf of what the council's looking at as a priority, knowing that we will in the general plan update process, set those policies, which will be much easier to implement, because they'll have some definition to them.
Slightly off-topic, but it feels like it'll be a little bit too late, though. I mean, we're, we're here with a public project, with the opportunity to start moving towards those goals, and, and we don't have an opportunity to really weigh in, but.
What you don't have are adopted policies and thresholds to rely on. What I think you're seeing, though, is for the past decade, the town has given quite a bit of thought to energy consumption, and, and in particular, the mitigated neg deck had two specific mitigation measures related to greenhouse gas emissions. One was that the remainder of the campus be certified to a lead silver equivalent, and that the two structures that are under consideration tonight be 10% above the Title 24 standard. So going back 10 years, we were already thinking about this, even though it wasn't a policy or a threshold of significance at that time.
I also expect that as we get in the general plan update process, as these ideas are coming forward and the policies are developed, that council has the opportunity to establish another resolution with those policies prior to the full execution of the general plan update. And they've done that in the past, we did that with our last, last general plan update, just to provide that direction once they, they know what it is. So I wouldn't say you have to wait until the end of the process. It's really, as the policies are developed, I could foresee council putting them in action.
Great. Back to the commission. Further commentary, if not motion, or, did you want to bring any?
Are we into discussion?
We are, yeah. We've been in it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's okay. It's all good. Maybe I didn't make that clear. We are into discussion, we are into deliberation.
Right, even though we have no assigned role from the town council, we have the resolution staring us in the face, and I think we need to do what we can to help the council achieve this admirable goal. In terms of putting off the establishment of greenhouse gas thresholds until we do a general plan and adopt a uniform threshold, that would be nice. That would also be a very nice way to never do anything. I'm sure other jurisdictions have thought of it, and I haven't found any that have survived a legal challenge. Generally, what I've seen is that local jurisdictions, if they're not going to adopt a uniform threshold, if they're going to put it off, they have to adopt a threshold on a project-by-project basis, come up with performance standards, or have a quality analysis that's based on the inability to estimate greenhouse gases. We haven't done that. In this case, if we're not going to adopt a uniform threshold that would apply to all projects, we're going to have every project that comes in front of this commission having to deal with an uncertain threshold that's going to be established for that particular project, and it's going to draw things out, create uncertainty, and a lack of uniformity. It's going to expose us to more risk, greater risk of litigation, it's going to require more staff time dealing with each individual project. It's interesting that this issue comes up for me in, in connection with municipal building that's only a small project. So for now, I'm, I'm, I'm not voting to adopt the staff's recommendation. I'm inclined to go the exemption process because it provides greater confidence that this project, maybe it's postponed a month, but that sure beats the slight risk, but real risk of litigation where we have to wait two and a half years for a judgment to come back that would probably be adverse.
So you'd like to see the motion come back with a SEQA exemption?
Yes.
So have it be recirculated, to summarize?
Yes, you've just summarized.
Thank you.
What I said.
What's the status of the additional study that, that you're working on at the site to understand any additional offsets that could be implemented? Again, I.
The study I was, I'm sorry, the study I was referring to earlier. So it's, so the town has hired a, a consultant team, and they're actively working on the project. So they've finished the first phase, which is to come visit all of our municipal facilities, do an evaluation of energy efficiency upgrades of the existing facilities. There's a parallel effort that's in conjunction with other public agencies to evaluate solar opportunities that is occurring, that this consultant is interfacing with. So I would suspect that we're probably four to six months out from having the laundry list of potential solar generation projects that the council could evaluate for implementation to help the council move towards the goal that they established of getting to zero, or to 100% renewable by, by 2020. So the, there was a question, you know, from a staff perspective that we asked ourselves, which was, should we include all of the rooftop solar and the pole-mounted solar opportunities at this particular site as a part of this particular project proposal? A couple of things happened. This particular phase of the project was re-initiated actually about 18 months ago. This particular phase of the project was re-initiated actually about 18 months ago. The, uh, the 100% renewable policy was created, I don't know, six or seven months ago. So it, it was kind of a, a new policy that came into play when the project was already budgeted for and already under development. So given that ultimately the town council was the entity who created the 100% renewable goal, that is the entity that's responsible for funding this project or not, and is the entity that would be responsible for funding some of these future initiatives, uh, we felt it was more appropriate for the portfolio of solar generation projects that the council would be considering to be, um, comprehensive across all town facilities so that if, for instance, there was another town facility that, uh, so if there's limited funds and a certain number, a certain amount of dollars available to go towards solar initiatives, the goal would be to have those dollars go to the projects that are going to have the highest payback and the most generation first. So if we had, uh, built, you know, the rooftop solar, for instance, on the large buildings into this project, that would potentially be taking money away from other projects that the council would, um, prefer to pursue first that might be more cost effective because you're not trying to retrofit existing buildings with new infrastructure. You're, um, you know, building it at a different location, not on top of a building, as an example. So that was some of the thinking that, um, you know, given that the, ultimately the town council is one that established the policy, uh, that is making the final decision on awarding a construction bid on this project or not, and is the entity who would make the funding decisions on some of these future renewable energy projects, we felt that it was reasonable to proceed the way that we are.
Commissioner Zabriski, can I maybe ask a question of you just to clarify something that I'm trying to wrap my head around? The reason why, or moving forward on future projects, the reason why you're uncomfortable with this particular one is because of the age of the MND, is that accurate? That it's not, the age of the MND doesn't adhere to current California state law as it particularly relates to greenhouse gas emissions?
Correct.
So a few, so a project coming before us that had a more current, whether it be an MND, EIR, what, you know, CEQA exemption doesn't matter theoretically is going to adhere to current standards and simply because this one's just a little bit older, that's, that's giving you that, that concern?
Couple of questions. So yeah, yes, I hope that future projects will comply with the current law and my concern, I would like to attribute the inadequacy of this one to the change in the law that has occurred since it was presented.
Okay, thank you. I was just trying to clarify that.
Well, I'll make a motion that the planning commission adopt resolution number 2018 relying on the previously adopted MND and approve the development permit based on the recommended findings and subject to the recommended conditions of approval.
And before we have a second?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Should I interrupt that second? How we, how we do there? Can I ask a question or should we go forward to see if there's a second or not?
You have a motion on the table, so I would go ahead and continue.
Got it, thank you. Any second.
I'll second that.
And then before we take a roll call, can I ask one clarifying question? Sorry.
Sorry.
Thank you. Um, if we were going to go through with, can you go back a slide Jenna, to the CEQA exemption that Commissioner Zabriski is referring to? Can you just give us a quick rundown of the, of the timeline that you would foresee on that?
So the, the middle bullet point?
Correct.
Um, we would expect that we could put this on for next month and it's really just a different notice that would say CEQA exemption rather than relying on an MND. So it's a pretty technical part of government, but we're doing that to be safe and conservative.
Yep, thank you. Okay, roll call on the motion on the table, please.
Commissioner Gatto?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Commissioner Zabriski?
No.
And Vice Chair Paulavi?
No.
Thank you.
So that gives us two, two. So we.
So that's considered an inaction. So, um, that doesn't allow the project to move forward. So someone can propose a different motion to see if you can move the vote.
Great, thank you. Would anybody like to propose a different motion?
I move that the matter be continued till the next month to allow for a CEQA exemption to be presented to the commission.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gatto?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Commissioner Zabriski?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Paulavi?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you. Let's move on to item 7.1. Do we, we don't need a break, it's only 7:15, we're good. Yeah. Um, item 7.1, we'll let the planners reorganize. It's a development code update for the Donner Lake Development Standards Amendments to Recorded Maps, Development Envelopes, Illegal Secondary Units, Minor Use Permits, General Property Development Standards, Signs, and Cleanup Amendments, all in one. Thank you. Yumi and Laura.
Good evening.
Good evening commissioners. Yumi and I are here tonight to present to you some development code, uh, update topics for you to discuss. Here's a overview of what we have. Um, we won't read this whole list because we're going to go through them one by one.
And there's quite a few of them as noted on the agenda, so we aren't going to go into detail and each and everyone, but we anticipate that you'll have some questions and we're ready to answer.
So the first step is the Donner Lake Development Standards. In the current development code, we have requirements for properties that are directly on Donner Lake to require a setback from the lake. So the structures have to be set back 20 feet from the high water mark. And then we also have an additional side yard setback requirement, which basically says that if the structure's over 25 feet, you add additional side setback for every fraction of five feet. So it gets a little complicated. The purpose of that was to maintain the view corridors between the structures, keep things from being too cluttered and to keep that visibility to the lake available to the community. So after working with this standard with various members of the community, it's difficult for them to understand. It's difficult for us to calculate sometimes. So we started looking at different ways we could achieve the same goals by simplifying. So what we came up with was instead of requiring this extra setback, where we're proposing is to just maintain the standard 10-foot side yard setback, say it's a firm line, no projections, no reductions, no non-conforming structures can be modified in those setbacks. And we think that that is going to be a much easier standard for people to understand and for us to enforce. And at the same time, it would keep that view corridor open. So, um, that's what we're proposing. So what we'll do is we're going through these, feel free to interrupt if you have questions or we can always come back to them later on. So the next topic is recorded map modifications. This is something that we've talked about a few times. We amended the code a while back to create a process where if there were physical changes that had happened to a parcel, like a waterway had changed course, was going through a building envelope, which we have seen happen over by Donner Lake, gave a option for a property owner to modify their recorded map. And what we've found with some recent, um, projects and legal implications is that requiring a new tentative map has some issues legally. And what we started looking at were other options for how someone could potentially change something on a map, not just because there's been a physical change, but because maybe they want to move a building envelope for a different reason or remove a restriction. And we looked at some other jurisdictions and what they were doing and we came up with a process that Placer County is using, uh, which is to basically modify the subdivision. It goes back to the original review authority, which we think is appropriate because you can look at it comprehensively and determine if there's any new impacts that need to be addressed. And then a document would be recorded that would basically change the characteristics of that parcel without requiring a new map, which would address the legal issues with the tentative map.
You mentioned you talked to other jurisdictions besides Placer County. Do you remember which ones?
Um, looked at Nevada County, Placer, um, do you remember which other ones we looked at?
Those two?
Um, yeah, I looked at locally.
Did Nevada County have something comparable?
Santa Barbara where Jenny used to work, we looked at their process. Uh, so this is the process that Placer uses.
Right. Were the others comparable?
They generally were requiring what's in our code now, which is an amended map or a certificate of correction, but based on talking with the town surveyor, he does not recommend going that route.
Right, I saw that in the staff report, thank you.
Yeah. So this would be a little bit of a different process, but based on the town surveyor's recommendation and the town attorney, we think that this is a good alternative.
Any other clarifying questions on this one? Might as well.
We can do it that way?
Sure, I mean, there's just a lot of them and otherwise we're going to get lost. So if you have a clarifying question, just let's do it now.
Okay. What does, um, what's the difference between a subdivision modification and a certificate of correction? I mean, how do they look, look?
Um, that's, I'm not actually sure what it looks like when you record it.
Uh, the certificate of correction is, it depends on what's being corrected. So if it was a meets and bounds calculation, if it was, um, an incorrect monument identification, I mean, there's some very technical things that happen that it can be done with something like a description that gets recorded or, um, a new map that looks similar to old map where you can have them side by side. So it really depends on what's actually being corrected, but it will say at the top certificate of correction and that's usually an identifier that's easy.
So it's a document though?
It is a document that gets recorded.
All right. And, and what does the subdivision modification, is it another, also a document?
Right, yeah.
So it kind of feels like the same thing?
It is, but based on the town surveyor's direction, a certificate of correction can only be used for errors. So we need a different process.
Makes sense, thanks.
Can I, sure?
Yeah, yeah.
The, this proposed amendment has to do with mod, modifications, um, in a project after the map's been recorded. My question is, why isn't a requirement that the applicant include in his application a description of the change circumstance warranting the modification? And why isn't that same language included in the findings? Why doesn't the commission have to make findings, a finding that there has been a change circumstance justifying a modification?
Originally I kept that finding in there and after it was reviewed by the town attorney and the other planning staff, since we're not requiring there to be a special circumstance that's triggering this, we wanted to have it a little bit more broad. So if someone wanted to change a building envelope for a different reason than a physical change to the parcel, it was much narrower before was how we had it written and the idea was to make it a little bit broader. So the thought was that that particular finding wasn't really relevant because there could be different reasons why someone might want to modify a map.
Then that flips my question. Why do we have at the very, in the very first paragraph that this is, this addresses the situation where there's a change circumstance after the map's been recorded?
Um.
Look at the first, the very introductory paragraph of the.
In the staff report or in the actual language?
The actual language.
Okay. Just give us a sec. So are you talking about what the existing language was or the proposed change within that paragraph?
What was in that little box. I'm, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, cause in the yellow.
If you could pull it up, that'd be great, but otherwise.
Do we have, I think we have.
Page eight.
Here, let us just pull it up. It's on page.
So page, what page am I on? Page six, actually. Page six of 28, um, item A, item, right, yeah, the first item, there are special circumstances applicable to the property that make any or all the conditions and restrictions of such a recorded parcel far no longer necessary.
Okay.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I think we should have updated that when we took out that, um, finding down here to make it consistent.
Ah, yeah. I see the inconsistency right there.
Since that was.
So you took it out there in the actual code, but you didn't take it out of the staff report?
Yeah, so we can, we can fix that if you think that that needs to be.
So do you see what they're talking about?
As long as it's updated in the code.
I mean, just another quick question, doesn't, doesn't that open us up to potentially frivolous, um, issues that are going to take up additional staff time and resources when you're already pretty busy?
Right now, we do have a process to allow people to request those kinds of changes through the tentative map. So this would just be a different process to let them ask for the same changes with it still coming back to the original review authority.
Okay.
Okay, I'm confused. Um, you're saying we have a parallel provision that accomplishes the same thing without requiring, um, change circumstances?
Right, through a new tentative map. And there have been cases recently that we've run into where the Housing Accountability Act is applicable, we think potentially to new tentative maps. So that could affect our ability to deny modifications, just one example.
Okay, that's a tentative map, not a final map, that you're talking about, having a more open, um, opportunity to change things.
To make that request, right.
In the context of a tentative map rather than a final map. And now we're proposing to have it be equally broad in connection with a final map.
Well, this would be, this wouldn't be recording a new map. This would be recording a supplemental document basically that changes some characteristics of an individual parcel.
So I think a little bit about the history of this too might be helpful just because this is something that we have struggled with, that, or, you know, you have someone who comes in and does a tentative map to get a subdivision and then they record it and then they sell off the parcels and then the next person that comes in is buying one parcel out of that subdivision. And oftentimes there are challenges with building on that site that just weren't anticipated even when we went through the original subdivision process. And back when the town was first kind of grappling with this, we used to do a resolution process with the council if we wanted to modify a building envelope or change the location of some of the easements that might be restricting the property. And our attorney's not comfortable with that process. So when we took a look at that and we said, okay, how do we help these property owners who weren't the original subdivider, but still have these challenges on their site, whether it was an environmental constraint that changed, maybe a creek moved, a wetland developed that wasn't there before, uh, the building techniques that they would need to do, use to address a rock formation or something like that are, are no longer applicable, what do we do to help them? And so originally we thought, well, if we change to go to this tentative map process, then they don't have to get everyone in the subdivision's approval to make this modification, but it still provides a public process. However, in using that for the first time, we realized that there were some unintended consequences of that and that has been the Housing Accountability Act and just the misunderstanding of why are we doing a tentative map for one parcel? There's no actual subdivision that's happening as part of that. And although that is a legal process we can use, we don't think that's the best process. And so something that Laura has been working on is what is a better process? And this modification process still allows us to, to have the certificate of correction for just those true technical errors, but allows that individual property owner to have a path to change building envelopes and things like that that often come in and they want to move, um, without having to go through that tentative map process. And again, our goal is really so that there's a public review process to allow a property owner to do this. It takes out the complexity of, we oftentimes don't even know who the original subdivider was. So if there was a, if we had a requirement still that involved all the property owners within a subdivision, nothing would ever change. We would have 100% the same exact subdivision as when it was created by the town. And that's not the goal. And that's not the goal. The goal is that we understand that things change. And so that's, that's the evolution of this. But I think it's helpful to just kind of have that in context, so that you can see why we came to where we came to.
But I thought we're taking out change, that you didn't even need a change. You could still come in and just piecemeal the tentative map after it was approved as a final map, after it was recorded.
So that's our point, is that the tentative map process is not an effective process to use for situations like this. And so this modification basically allows us to have a property owner that can do the one-off that doesn't involve the entire subdivision, but isn't at the same level of findings and complexity as a tentative map, I guess you could say.
And the findings for this particular process would require that it's become, be found to be consistent with the original tentative map. So it may be frivolous, but you'd still need to find that it is consistent and meets the requirements of that approval.
Yeah, I don't know that it'd be frivolous. I'm just trying to understand now, actually, what's being proposed. It sounds like regardless of whether there's been a change or somebody just discovers that they wish it were a different way in regard to a particular parcel within the subdivision rather than across the subdivision, this is the vehicle that would allow them, this amendment would allow them to come in for, I don't know, it's like a variance analogous to a variance for a particular piece of property.
Right, so they could request those changes. These findings that I have up on the screen would still be required for the review authority to make. So what we're trying to achieve is that the modifications would be looked at comprehensively to make sure that that's not creating inconsistencies with the previous approvals in terms of SEQA, clustering, things like that. So the review authority, whether it's your commission or the zoning administrator, would still have to make that set of findings.
And this is what Placer County has? Or do they have changed, do they require a change in conditions after recordation?
They have something similar. They call it, I can't remember, it's like a notice of...
Variance.
Notice of variance or something is what they call the document that they actually record.
To trigger the applicant's ability to request a modification, does there need to be a changed condition after recordation of the map? Or is it the same as what you're proposing here tonight, where no change in conditions is required in order for them to come back before the commission?
I think the physical change was something we put in our code, because at the time, we wanted it to be limited to very specific situations that that would apply to. So I think that's something that the town actually came up with, was requiring that specific circumstantial change to the parcel.
Thank you.
We can come back with more questions afterwards, if that works for the commission. So, thank you, Laura. Development envelope.
Okay, development envelopes. This is a new definition that we came up with. We realized that we have, in a few places in the development code and in the general plan, a reference to building envelopes. That is something that we've never defined. So there have been some questions over the past year or two from the community about what is it? When we actually looked at how to define a building envelope, the building code has a completely different definition. It's all about energy and how the structure is constructed. So we realized that we needed to come up with our own definition, because really what we're looking at is disturbance on the parcel. Where can it happen and what's allowed outside that area? So we came up with the definition that's in your staff report. I didn't put the whole thing up here to try to provide that clarity. And still, the overall goal is to keep cluster development, keep open space, and be more specific about what you can and can't do. Any questions on that?
Did this come out of the project from Grace, that was due east of Grace Crossing on the building envelope issues that we were dealing with before?
No, I would say this is a bigger conversation we've been having for a while now. We've had a lot of questions on, can I project outside my building envelope? Can I, you know, what can I do?
And so development envelope is, is going to be defined differently from building envelope going forward, at least for our purposes?
Right.
Got it.
And will you have to change all the references to, from building envelope to development envelope?
Yeah, there's a few in the development code that we would update as part of this, and then the general plan, we would update that as we're doing the general plan update.
And are we approving those changes in the general, tonight, too?
Um...
Because it looks like you just have this one definition section.
Yeah, I think, I don't, I didn't list out every, there were only maybe three references in the development code to it. In the clustering section, I think, is where most of them were. And I don't think we listed out pages or anything that each of those is on, but yeah, we would clean those up.
Okay, I just have, it may just be a comment. When I first looked at this definition, I was struck by the fact that essentially the definition was in the first sentence, and then we had a statement of purpose, and then we had restrictions that would be imposed using that definition. And commonly, in higher jurisdictions, you'll have a definition section, and you'll have a statement of purpose or declaration of purpose section, and the restrictions that apply that definition are in separate sections. But it appears the town often does draft code provisions where it likes to pack both definitions and the restrictions all under the definition. And that, I guess that's customary.
Well, I suppose, yeah, the alternative would have been to create a separate section for development envelopes. That seems messier.
Yeah.
But if you think that's a better approach, we could always do that.
Don't worry, I'm not going to suggest that tonight, but I am curious, Danielle. Is there some background on that?
So when we first started doing development code updates in 2007, we had a long discussion with the commission and council at the time about, do we want to reformat our zoning code? Because, you know, we're relying on an older version and things have changed. And when we started going through and looking at, you know, pulling out all the definitions and putting them in the glossary and kind of simplifying, the volume of work that that created wasn't, just not something that we had the time to do. I mean, I do think that there's opportunity, when we go through this next major cycle after the general plan update is done, to do that. But so far, right now, we've been trying to keep the consistency of how the code's written, where you have the purpose section, and you've got the definitions all in one.
Quick question. A little concerned about, you know, not allowing tree removal outside of the development envelope. And I know then it talks about, you know, unless specifically allowed through conditions of approval. I guess I'm just, you know, that get that we're not trying to get people to just take down trees for view shed and that sort of thing. But from a forest health perspective, I think that is a little bit limiting.
Our code is definitely more permissive for removing, based off of vegetation removal for fire safety or for just natural, just to be safer in general. So I would say that we could put that language in there, that that does not include the anything for fuels.
Thanks.
Illegal secondary units.
Okay, this is another issue that we've been, sorry, thank you, give me. Been grappling with a bit. As you know, we recently updated the code to incorporate the state legislation for second units that relaxed a lot of the requirements, removed the parking requirements, things like that, reduced setbacks. We also changed our impact fees to a square footage basis to incentivize smaller units. And the special districts have also taken steps to get in line with the state requirements, where they can't require connection fees for certain types of ADUs or only a fraction of what they were previously charging. So we think those are all good steps to encourage people to get the second units permitted. What we found is that there are still situations where we don't really have the tools to address something that we know is likely to become an illegal second unit. We can tell when you look at a plan set if it has, you know, a full-size refrigerator, a second washer and dryer, its own access, you know, has all these things, yet they're saying it's my rec room. Right now, we don't have a way to say, you know, we think that's going to be an independent living area. And our concern with that is life safety. We've seen situations where people have closed off and accessed the main house, they don't have proper egress, there's been a fire, this happened a few years ago, could have turned out really badly. And so we're just trying to be careful and try to address these issues. So one idea we came up with was to say, okay, if you want to have a couple of these things in a conditioned living space that you're not permitting as an independent living area, it should be limited to two. You can choose whatever you want. If you want to have more than that, then we would consider it an independent living area. So what we were proposing is to update our dwelling and kitchen definitions to specify what you can and can't have. We talked about also potentially putting a deed restriction requirement in, but we decided not to go that route, because we don't want to try to punish people before they do something wrong, basically. So we didn't go that route. This is just one idea. If you have other direction that you want to give us about that, we're happy to consider other ideas.
Any just clarifying questions on that, other than, we'll talk, we'll do discussion afterward, more just questions right now?
I just have one question.
Sorry. Commissioner Gado, go ahead.
So you're seeing life safety issues with people that are permitting their modifications to their house, and then doing further modification after permit?
So what we're seeing is people converting a conditioned living space. Say you've got a garage, and you say my office is above it, and then they turn that into a second unit that's not permitted, doesn't have proper egress windows, someone's actually living in there. They're putting in electrical for a stove that's not permitted. Those are hazards as far as our chief building official is concerned. So we're trying to make sure that those situations don't happen. And along with encouraging people to go through the process to get them permitted, which we think we've made easier, to try to encourage legal units.
They, a lot of trucky is on septic, and a lot of those houses on septic have no ability to add second, secondary dwelling units.
Except for junior accessory dwelling units, because those cannot be considered a second unit for the purpose of...
So what's a junior secondary dwelling unit?
That's something the state came up with, that we incorporated into the code when we did our update, which basically says if you're converting an existing bedroom within a structure, it can't be charged any connection fees, it can't be considered a separate unit. It has to have some kind of cooking facilities, but doesn't have to have its own bathroom. There's very specific requirements for them. It's really strange. We've only seen one so far.
I've seen two people apply for, attempt to apply for permits to convert living space that their children have gone off to college, and they want to basically turn their house into a duplex, and they can't because of septic. And there's no pipe to hook their sewer up to, and I believe environmental health won't let them modify their septic system. And so it just runs against everything from the state mandate and what, we're all trying to get more housing.
Right.
So how does this help that?
So this doesn't necessarily address that. I mean, the junior ADU would be an option for people in that situation. We've seen people who are on septic, who had a three-bedroom septic system, they converted a bedroom to an office so that they could then create a junior ADU and still meet the septic requirements that environmental health had. So there is a path for that. Like I said, it's limited in the size, and there's specific requirements, but if someone met those requirements, then that would be an option. This is more geared towards making sure that these aren't happening in an unsafe way, and trying to encourage people to get it permitted if that's how they're planning on using it.
Do you feel that if we did allow them to install a 220-volt electrical and did allow them as far down the path as we possibly could, that would actually be safer than? Because I do.
And I think that's maybe just a point of, of discussion that we can have after the fact, but that's, I mean, unless you have a direct answer to that. But seems like you are talking to us a little bit more than maybe? I don't know.
Well, I just wonder if it's been explored, that's all. I just, I just want it thoroughly explored.
Yeah, well...
It's a big constraint.
We want people to have some flexibility. So if they want a 220 volt and they want a, you know, full bathroom in their office with a tub, you know, we wouldn't say you can't do that, since people may want to use these spaces in different ways. So we want to have enough flexibility, and two is what we came up with, maybe on that list of items, maybe feel that a different number is more appropriate. That'd be another option to consider.
And speaking to the septic system question, I understand what you're saying, that it is a large portion of our community that is on septic, that does, that would benefit from having, they would create a new, a whole new area that can allow for secondary residential units in there. If we could allow them, allow parcels on septic to have second unit, secondary residential units. But there are competing interests, and our interest as a community is, we do want more housing, but we also want to ensure that our water quality, as we move forward into the future, is intact, and that we continue to have safe, a safe water source.
And isn't that a LaHantin prohibition?
That is.
Do you anticipate this topic coming up in the review of the general plan, in updating the general plan?
In terms of the septic requirements?
In terms of what you're proposing, the whole business about how to allow for secondary units at the same time, have a way of preventing unlawful secondary units?
I'm not sure if that's something we expect to discuss in the general plan.
Isn't this, maybe just to clarify, I think, on your question, I mean, really what you're asking an applicant to do is, if they're going to meet this definition, we want them to come through with an ADU or a secondary, we just want to add a permit on so we know what's going on. We're not trying to prohibit necessarily, we're not trying to prohibit a secondary unit, we're just trying to identify the secondary unit, and then just go through that process, which has been made easier and less cumbersome due to all the new regulation. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes.
Okay.
And ensure that it's inspected.
Does that answer your question, or no?
I'll wait for the discussion.
Okay. Sorry. Any other specific questions on that? Okay, keep going.
We won't spend a lot of time on this one. This is sort of a cleanup, but maybe a little bit more than a cleanup, so we put it in our regular section. Right now, we have this minor use permit requirement for residences over 7,500 square feet. We, as we'll talk about later in the cleanups, there's a change that we're proposing with the use permit, minor use permit expirations, because they don't expire. And so we're going to clarify that, but we also wanted to make it clear that in addition to the use permit for these type of structures, you also need a zoning clearance, which is tied to the physical development of the property. And we realized that there were some findings that were in that section that were not consistent with that, so we're proposing to clean all of that up.
So now I'm up. So...
I had a quick question on that. Does anybody else? No. My only, my quick question on that was that the timelines will be determined prior to the granting of the permit, if I read the staff report correctly. Right, so if we want to put a timeline on it, it will be at permit issuance?
You're talking about the cleanup for the...
The minor... Yes.
Yeah, that's what the town attorney said. You can put a condition in there saying you have to do things by a certain date, it just doesn't automatically expire.
Got it.
It's not case law.
Got it. And this does, this is just for residential? That particular piece? That doesn't affect, commercial's still different? This is just residential that we're talking about?
So yeah, this is specific to the section that talks about minor use permits for residences. But the cleanups would be taking out the non-relevant items under the findings for use permits and minor use permits.
Okay. Thank you.
So right now, our, our development code has a standard height measurement, which is from average natural grade to the tallest point of the structure. We also have what is, we call a split roof height measurement, which provides incentives for, or provides allowances for, generally for parcels on steep lots, but it could be for any parcel that, and encourages terracing and mass, and changes of massing within the structure to create a more pleasant, or I guess more aesthetically pleasing house or structure. So the split roof allows for averaging of the two component, two or three or multiple components of a structure that have at least a five-foot change in height and a 10-foot distance. So it's not a very, right now, it's not a very large difference. So right now, we're proposing to change that to be a more substantial change, to require that the height change between the two components are 10 feet, and then that the split roof is at least 20 feet to be included within the averaging of the split roof definition. So I would say that this image that I have provided to you on the right is something that may have triggered this conversation. We haven't seen this too much, but this single-family residence in Todd Donner is on a steep lot, and tacked on a very small portion that meets the criteria of what a split roof would, is. So those two components, the tall component, which is just considered one split roof, and then that small component on the bottom left is considered... and then that small component on the bottom left is considered as another split roof, so you average those together and they're weighted equally, so they're, they met the requirement of meeting the 35-foot height requirement, even though that the largest part of it is about 44 feet tall, and this smaller portion is about 20 feet tall. So this is something that triggered that discussion. And then we also required, since we equally weight the split roof components, we're proposing to require that the split roof to be eligible for the split roof height measurement, that the separation has to be, the split roof component has to be 30% of the total, total roof area of the entire structure to be eligible for this split roof measurement. Also, we're proposing to, right now, we have a maximum height requirement at any point, since right now we look at an average natural grade to the highest point, but right now we have a requirement that any, at any point on the structure has to be less than 45 feet. That's a pretty tall structure, and judging from this building that you can see here, that's almost 45 feet. We're proposing to reduce that to 40 feet, but I would like to note that there are other allowances within the development code that allows for exceeding that height limit if it's on a steep lot. And this is an image of how you would actually measure a split roof, so for discussion purposes. I'm also proposing, we're also proposing two changes to our setback requirements. Right now, we have setback, we're providing clearer direction on what to do with rear setbacks for irregularly shaped parcels. Right now, we have this diagram on the upper-left corner of that diagram that shows what to do when it comes to a very tight point in the back, where you find a five-foot section of the rear that's parallel to the front property line, and you set, that's considered your rear property line, and you setback the rear setback from that line. This is very easy, I think it comes out pretty easily and pretty understandably to designers and dress people in our community. Now, when it comes to angles that are acute, or 90 degrees or less, but it's not quite as clear for projects that are, have obtuse angles. So what we're proposing, just for clarity's sake, is to treat obtuse angled rear setbacks to be, that they're both, both property lines are considered the rear property line. If the commission thinks that that's unnecessary and we can still go with the current requirements, that's okay, too, to continue the existing five-foot alignment and to offset that from the 20 feet. Mostly, the actual description of it for the obtuse angled parcels just comes out, is very, it seems to be more confusing to us and to convey that to the public. For front setbacks, we have an allowance right now that reduces the front, that can, you can reduce a front yard setback for parcels that are over 40,000 square feet, up to 50% if it's on a steep lot. We're proposing to keep that, but just clarify what can be in that front yard setback that's reduced, and we're proposing that it's a hard line, no deck projections, no e-projections, that it's just the 50% front yard setback is what you get, and you could bring your building wall up to that point. And then we're proposing at our planning commissioner's request to bring back the temporary banners, which were removed at the last sign code update. Currently, we allow for banners only 30 days prior to and 30 days after a business opens. Previously, we allowed temporary banners as part of a temporary sign permit within the 90-day limit that is allowed for the A-frame signs, so total A-frame signs plus a banner, you have to, you can have 90 days in a calendar year. So if you have a banner out for 45 days and an A-frame sign for 45 days, even if they're out at the same time, that's considered 90 days. So we put that language back in, if the planning commissioner wants to move forward with that language that's in there.
Can we go back? What about the election signage? Wasn't that a part of that, too?
Yes, it'll be in the...
Just to clarify.
It'll be in the cleanup amendments.
Oh, I'm sorry. Got it. I thought it was part of that one. Sorry.
Okay, so on to cleanup amendments. This is the one that we were talking about with the minor use permits and use permits not expiring, and like Dave said, there is a way to write into the conditions that there are certain timeframes that have to be met.
So this is very apropos to these days, signs during election periods. Right now, the signs, we wanted to clarify that the signs are required to be ground-mounted and clarify that the square footage requirements is for each face instead of cumulative for one face. So that's eight square feet per side in residential zones and 16 square feet per side in commercials or non-residential zones. And then we wanted to incorporate a height measurement of three feet, and the purpose of this is to reduce sign clutter and to ensure it doesn't impede traffic visibility, and these types of signs are what's expected during these periods, generally.
I had a quick clarifying question on that. That's come up from some members of the public to me, but, and then I meant to email you previously, so I apologize for that. So we're now seeing banner election signs on buildings, so, and I noticed in, you actually put us something to that effect, saying refer to the sign chapter. So currently, or excuse me, next year, when the new sign ordinance takes effect, those banner signs that are currently up, and really the ones that are up right now, those have to apply for temporary sign permits, they are not considered election signs within this framework. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Same to you, too. So at the last sign code update, our town council, after your review as planning commissioner, the town council added additional language that allowed one additional sign on parcels on corners within our downtown. Staff put in that language, when they, to draft that language, we added in the downtown study area, which actually is a very large area that encompasses the area from the cemetery to the east all the way to south, 89 South, so along West River Street. So it's, staff today is proposing that we change that to the historic preservation overlay district, which is shown on the right and in the blue area in the downtown study area. So it's a much smaller area. It's the area that is our most unique part of our community and the part that we want to give special allowances to, and that's what we're proposing to, why we're proposing to reduce that size, that area.
I also had a quick clarifying question on that one. Love signs. And the second sign, so not the fronted sign, so the secondary sign, what ordinance is that governed by in terms of like square footage allowed and stuff like that, or is it the same as the fronted sign and it can just be equitable?
So it's, in the same, in the sign code, it is, the regular frontage would be one square foot per lineal foot of the building business frontage. The, for this secondary sign, without a customer entrance on that side, it'd be half a square foot per lineal foot.
And was there an example that brought this to the fore? Was it more just you were like, oh, man, that's a really big space, we need to cut that back?
It's mostly because the intent, I believe, when our council discussed it, was that it was meant to be for our downtown core, where, where we actually do our historic design review, where it really creates, it has our most unique character as a community. And I think that's the intent.
Thank you. Any other clarifying questions? Yes? I heard something.
I have five questions that covers the, everything since Laura switched over to Yumi and Beck.
Do you want to maybe, should we just let them finish? Because I'm pretty sure they're, they're almost done, and then maybe we'll do public comment, and then we'll come back to commissioner questions on any of them, and we'll kind of hit them all one at a time. Is that okay with you?
Wonderful.
Awesome. Thank you.
So we added language in that prohibited signs that are off-site signs, like billboard signs. We just wanted to clarify that, since we took it out last time on accident. And then we wanted to clarify that night sky compliant lighting is not required for internally illuminated sign, illuminated signs. It seems difficult to accomplish. So we just wanted to make that clear, and then also require that lights for signage are warm and temperature and minimal in brightness. And then finally, we have some other smaller sign cleanup amendments. It's a lot of text, but I promise that they're smaller. We, I propose, we're proposing to reduce the subdivision, maximum sign area for signs at the entrances of subdivisions to 25 square feet. I believe in my last iteration, for some reason, it got changed to some very large, like 60-square-foot number, and so we're proposing to revert it back to its original previous sign code maximum. And then we're proposing to put in signage for churches and places of worship, since that is a use that's allowed in residential zones, and we wanted to, we just made it consistent with others, other non-residential uses in residential zones. And then we are proposing to reincorporate landscaping for ground mountain signs, which is within residential, in residential zones, consistent with the requirements for these same signs in non-residential zones, and then add language that requires that lighting cannot trespass beyond the sign face. So today, we're recommending all of these amendments to the development code in resolution 201819, recommending approval to the town council of the 2018 development code amendments, and recommending the amendments to be exempt from CEQA pursuant to section 15061B3.
Thank you very much.
And there's our list again.
Yes. We're gonna, we're gonna need that. Keep that up. Fellow commissioners, I'm going to propose that we do public comment first and see if we have any questions from them, and then we'll bring it back to us. So with that said, let's open it up to public comment. You've been waiting patiently. Thank you.
Take two. My name is Svenja Ziegler. Commissioners and town staff think that I may speak here, so I want to speak to the illegal secondary units. So I commend the town for trying to avoid or prohibit secondary, illegal secondary units for sure, but I think the proposed restrictions are really too tight. And I would just want to give you an example. So we, we remodeled our downstairs room that was more like a basement about nine years ago, had it permitted, and it actually, I think, has seven of these things that you would only allow two of, and we never intended to use that as a secondary unit and will never use it as a secondary unit, but we do use it for guests. We have adult children now who come back. So it has a bathroom, it has a little kitchenette that's also great for teen parties. So there are uses where these facilities make a lot of sense, where there's never an intention to make that as a secondary unit, and I think it would put an undue burden on homeowners. You want to make these uses, uses happen without ever having the intention of having a secondary unit. So I really think it's too, much too restricted. I would rather see what you're already pursuing, the, maybe a carrot and stick approach, keeping, working on making it really easier to get secondary units permitted and getting the fees further down for that permitting process. I'm very glad that that's, the town is working in that direction, and that's also recommendation of the Mountain Housing Council, of course, and also putting higher penalties for people who actually use secondary units, or maybe other measures that you could propose, instead of putting very tight restrictions that really put an undue burden on homeowners who have good intentions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner, staff, public. I'm a Donner Lake homeowner, and I'm very much in favor of the first Donner Lake...
Carmen, state your name. Further echo.
I'm Carmen Carr.
Thank you.
I'm very much in favor of Donner Lake development standards. I'm a Donner Lake homeowner, and I live in a subdivision where a developer, way back when, developed it, and we're still restricted by some of the recorded easements from that development, and it's been very difficult every time we sell a, sell a property there because it comes up in the prelim. So I'm very much in favor of passing the first Donner Lake suggestions by the staff. Secondly, I want to comment on what Svenja says in regards to secondary units. It is, I would really much also suggest that we encourage people to permit the secondary units and make it easier to them, instead of make it more difficult, and then they're hidden, and then during the sale of a property, they usually come out and it affects the sale of the property significantly. So how can we access the secondary units and make it more, make them more compliant and easier for people to actually utilize them for additional housing? Thank you.
Thank you, Carmen. Any additional public comment on any of that? All of this is all wrapped into one, so let's hear it now. All right. Closing public comment without any further. So you guys good? You want to take a break? Keep going? Everybody's good? Yeah? All right. Keep going. So I'm going to take Chair Keelis' role here, and we'll hit one at a time. I think that's how it makes the most sense. So basically, we'll do questions first, have a little bit of deliberation on each, and then try to get to some sort of consensus on each one of these as we get through it. How's that sound? Starting with the Donner Lake development standards, any clarifying questions or comments? Seeing none, I think we're good there. That's a good start. Number two, the recorded map modifications. Any additional questions or comments? Seeing no nods. Commissioner Zabriskie, you good? Okay. Development envelope, number three. Any additional questions or comments?
I appreciate the change.
Did you want to add in language about the fuels reduction in there?
We did, yeah.
Yeah, for sure. I think that would help clarify.
Or defer to fuel specialists for any additional, some sort of language about that. Would that work for you? Yeah? Great. Number four, illegal secondary units. I think we do have some discussion here. Or questions. Questions first. Any questions?
I have a question. What, how far is close proximity? I mean, a person coming in is going to wonder what, and then they're going to complain because it won't be their idea of what close proximity is.
Yeah, we don't have a definition for that. There is some language in the state legislation that is similarly not specific. So if you think that that needs to be clarified, we could come up with something.
Well, I think clarification is a good idea, because otherwise you could have arguments at the counter when someone comes in.
If, if you decide you are in support of these changes, we can work on some language to propose before you make a motion.
On the broader question of the illegal secondary units, I think it is a real problem. I share Doug's, I appreciate Doug's remark about whether this makes those habitations safer or more hazardous, whether somebody's just going to overload the circuit with their, their stoves, their microwaves, their hot plates or not, whether sanitation will be worse or not. I could see staff having spent a lot of time trying to work through this and figure it out. I don't think it's an easy problem. I actually tend to also, I don't know, sympathize is not the right word, but I tend to agree with what the commenter said about there should be another way of enforcing the law rather than trying to catch it upfront. Unfortunately, I don't have a recommendation for you on that. I'm just saying, I see the problem. I don't know that this is the solution.
Yeah, I really appreciated those comments. You know, it helps kind of put it in context. So I agree. I'm not sure what the solution is, and, you know, this list looks great and all, but in reality, you know, it's, it could just further confuse the issue.
My question is, A, I have two questions. A, do we, do we have an enforcement policy, or is it just a sort of discover and it's found type of thing? And then B, using the example that was given from the public, what, what would the cost or additional expense, both in time and resource and dollars, be, for example, whether or not she intended that, for that, that basement to be a secondary unit or not? If the town wanted to process it as a secondary unit, what would the additional burden be to that type of permit process?
If it's an existing living area that they're converting, it'd be likely no impact fees, just, I don't even think it'd be a conversion necessarily. The building permit may just need to know, the building department may just need to know that it's a secondary residential unit. With our new impact fees that have been changed, if they came in and it was not a conditioned living space that they wanted to convert into a secondary residential unit, or just a general living area, rec room, it would have the same impact fees. The building permit fees would likely also be the same, since they're based off a square footage. As far as utilities...
So if you're converting space within a residence... So they, if it's within your house now, they can't do that.
So just to clarify, because Yumi, I heard a "may" in there, which gives me a little bit of pause. You said it may not cost anymore. So I guess, I'm just trying to look out for the property owner in this, and if it really is a null cost, which is what you just kind of got done telling us, then if we're certain it's a null cost, that makes me a little bit more comfortable than if we are like, "Well, maybe, we don't really know." Because that's what I heard. I heard a "maybe."
So let's be honest, that if you're building a second unit legally, and you come in for a permit for a second unit, you pay building permit fees for that dwelling. You also pay hookup fees, which are outside of the town's control. So if you're hooking up to sewer, you have to pay a sewer hookup fee, which is expensive. Those are some of the things that we're in talks with the other agencies about, because that seems to be the biggest prohibitor from people coming in to do them legally. That, and the fact that we have a lot of older homes that don't meet code requirements. I mean, I think our intent in looking at this is really truly from a life safety perspective, that we spend a lot of code compliance time working through illegal second units where tenants who are just uninformed rent a space thinking that it's an approved unit for them to live in, and it has unsafe conditions. So I know that there's been a lot of dialogue on the DICE about, you know, if we allow someone to put in a 220 and give them a permit for that, is that gonna somehow, you know, encourage them to do the right thing? It hasn't been our experience. People who want to do the illegal activity do it. But I think, you know, we've had, and I'll give an example of this just because it hit home for us, that we had a house in Sierra Meadows where we figured out from a tenant moving out that someone had taken a space and blocked off access and created an illegal second unit. When our code compliance went out to work with the property owner and get it back to where it was all interconnected within the house, and part of the house, it was no longer a second unit, within a week, there was a fire in that house. And had they not had that access open, those owners of that house would have died. And so for us, we take these very seriously, because we do have a lot of these situations where there's just been work that's done, and maybe with their best intention, to house their friend, their neighbor, family member, or something like that. But we're not doing this to try and discourage people doing units. It really is a life safety issue for us.
But that example you give wouldn't even be subject to this, is the problem. I mean, we're talking about people coming in for a permit. I mean, we can't, we have no way to go out and deal with that situation that you just described.
Except that they had come in and asked about it originally, and never followed through with it. Instead, they went and did the work. You know, who knows what the reasoning was for it, but did the work without the permit.
So, I'll start us off. I personally feel pretty uncomfortable with the two item thing. I mean, that, to me, having like closets and things like that built in there, if we're gonna go down this route and we're prepared to make a decision on this, at the very least, I don't like that number. And I think the proximity issue is another issue. I don't know how you guys feel about this item.
Can you refresh my memory on the close proximity? I don't even know what that, I don't even remember that. I'd have to go and open this all up, and I lost my page.
Let staff explain it.
Okay. What's, close proximity to what? I just don't, I can't find it in here, it's just--
Yeah, hang on, I can pull it up. Which one? D. Close proximity? Is that what you're making? Yeah, it's all right here. Where they're basically saying, if you have two or more of these items in close proximity, and I think Jan's point was that that should be defined if we're going to have that in the requirements. So, something else you could talk about is the deed restriction. That's something that we didn't, we didn't go that route, because, like I said, we didn't want to preemptively punish people if that's not what their intention was. But really, all that does is say, this area is not permitted to be a dwelling unit, puts the future buyers on notice, because it'll show up when they go to purchase it, that that was never permitted. So it kind of catches it as properties sell and things have been done illegally. The town attorney was not 100% comfortable with that, but that's something we could look at if you think that that would be a better, rather than trying to restrict the types of equipment they have in the unit, putting some kind of restriction on the property that just provides that notice to future owners, and requires the current property in order to acknowledge that they're not building it for the purpose of it being a second unit.
What's the cost on doing all that?
The deed restriction is just something that, in the past, we've just done it through a building permit. We've required them to draft it before we issue and record it prior to final, so it's just the cost of recording it with the county.
And that deed restriction could be lifted by a new homeowner, for example, through the process. What would that look like? If they wanted to get that deed, they'd have, just have to come through, and they'd have to go through the ADU permit process at that point, right?
Exactly. And we have had that happen, where people have wanted to lift the restriction and get it permitted for that use.
I'm still a little troubled by this whole thing. I don't want to limit people to two things. She's a classic example of someone that wants to put a bunch of stuff in. I think it's gonna encourage more illegal work, based on my experience in the construction industry, not less. I just, I don't know if I have an answer. I actually, I guess I kind of like the deed restriction. I totally understand. I don't fault you, I don't, I think you're well-intentioned to try to get everything permitted. But when there's other agencies, like, is it La Honton that's preventing us from, you know, that put, just put the kibosh on a project, that's when people do things illegally. And I don't see this solving that problem. I see it just creating more of a police state, building department police state, so--
Yeah, we're definitely open to other ideas. We've been discussing this internally, how could we address this? This is just one idea we came up with. If you have other ideas, or if you want to give us direction to pull this item and look at the deed restriction as a different alternative, we could do that.
Is there a way also to potentially follow, what's the TOT reporting tool that we use at the town?
Host compliance?
Host compliance, thank you. You know, is there a way to refer a property to host compliance? You know, without putting these types of restrictions in place, can we say, "Hey, let's keep an eye on this property," you know, in some other manner that's more just keeping an eye on it to make sure it's not happening, and then dealing with the issue at the back end, rather than trying to put a whole suite of additional regulation on something, which I think most of us are feeling a bit uneasy with at this point?
I think--
Do you want to come back to us?
What you're seeing up at this table is that this may be something that we continue and discuss internally, including with the town attorney. I mean, where this is originating from is the volume of illegal second units that we experience in the town, the truly unsafe conditions that we do see when we are able to actually get inside a unit, which isn't necessarily easy, and the amount of time that our staff is spending on these units. So we're trying to explore ways to incentivize people to get permits, and then also give us more ability to enforce upon the units that are illegal. And it sounds like your commission isn't comfortable with that, and there might be other avenues that we could pursue, including the deed restrictions and potential inspections of folks that do have these suspected second, illegal second units. But I think we'd like maybe some more time to explore that.
Yeah, and I mean, I think, you know, we do use compliance with these units, and to Carmen's point, a lot of times, these are caught at point of sale, because they're being advertised, and that's a trigger for our co-compliance officer to know that they're out there. In addition to oftentimes, a tenant moving out, which is the other times that we'll find it, or an adjacent property owner who's complaining about the activity next door, and us kind of following through with that. It crosses the line, too, with the whole short-term rentals issue, but that's, we're trying to keep those a little bit separate, so which is why host compliance kind of does that world, and Carrie kind of does her thing with these units. But, you know, it's definitely an option that we could just, you know, ramp up our compliance with these if we needed to, as an alternative.
From my personal experience, I've seen this as being a real problem that you're trying to solve. I've encountered people who are renting illegal, unsafe units, who fear they will have no place to live if they blow the whistle on their landlord. So I fully appreciate what you're trying to do, but I also feel this is not the solution. I feel like landlords, I mean, property owners are gonna figure another way to get around this. Somebody coming in might look at this, and maybe they were gonna put in an exterior door, and then they see, "Oh, I can only do two of these things." Well, they're not gonna put in the exterior door, and the person who moves into that place is then trapped if there's a fire. So I don't feel this is the way to go. But I think there needs to be a solution.
I think we all echo the sentiment, for sure. And I think we all really agree with pretty much everything you just said, without speaking for the rest. So maybe just to keep moving, for the time being, we're gonna potentially pull number four out of our package for the time being? Is that consensus? Okay, great. Commissioner Gatto, we get a head nod, yes, maybe? No? It's up to you.
I thought I already made my position clear.
Thank you, just trying to be official. Minor use permits, number five. Any questions or concerns on this one? Great, seeing none. Moving on, number six, the height and split roof issue.
Yumi, it's just, there was a, under Section 18.30.090D3. Is there, is, yeah. I'm not sure.
19 of the staff report.
He's got really good notes. Oh, there you go. What page is that in the staff report? 19, thank you.
There it is. Under item D3, do you want to change 47 to 42?
That sounds wonderful.
That's higher math, I know, for me at least. That's my only question.
Any other comments, questions?
I guess I just wanted a little, can you just, so is the whole purpose to, can you just go over the purpose of this one more time?
Sure. The purpose is to truly encourage people, or to truly encourage a more substantial massing change if somebody wants to do something that requires a split roof measurement. Generally, the split roof measurement is used when you're trying to maximize the height as much as possible. But for the most part, what we want, when we want to see it used is on a hillside, when it's terracing down a hill, because of the constraints of a hillside. We would want to see, instead of having large, maybe you would have one large amount of, a large height on one portion of the property, but it could terrace down with more substantial massing than what you see on that picture on the right, those, both of those pictures on the right. You'd see more, a bigger difference, and a larger change in the total scale of each of the building. You could have the same amount of square footage, I believe, but you would have a lesser impact on the visual aesthetics in the community.
So, is this a don't?
Yes, these are both recent examples that would show you that how a split roof was, the split roof measurement was exploited.
Okay, because, right, I don't think that looks good. Okay, I just wanted to make sure this was an example of where we wanted to go.
It's funny, too, because the evolution of this, as I've been told by the previous town manager, was that when homes started going up on ski slope in Tahoe Donner, that all you saw was just this row of deck after deck after deck, and this one giant mass with, you know, kind of a box shape. And so this was put in place to kind of address those early Tahoe Donner homes that started to get built at an oversized scale. So it was really to bring the scale back, and the mass back down.
Okay, thank you.
I don't, I like what you're doing with this. I'm still a little, I don't know, in just reading these amendments, that it's clear to me, so I don't know if, I just, as long as you're comfortable, it's gonna work. It's just not that clear to me.
I think you should show examples.
I think during all of these, I echo that statement, just like every time we do these development standard updates, like, all we want are like real examples that we can physically see, right? I feel like we do these all the time, and, yeah, we're just like, "What do you mean?" Are we good on that one? So we're generally in favor, and we're okay with that one?
I wish everything was that simple.
I know, I know.
But somehow, when we do simple, someone finds a loophole, and then we go, "Huh, I never would have thought of that."
We used that example.
Yeah. All right. Are we on, what are we on? Oh, setbacks is part of heights. Setback questions or comments? I believe it's part of heights, going back to my, any questions or issues with the setback piece of it?
Okay, here's a big one for you. I noticed when the language has acute parenthetically, and then it has obtuse, is it obtuse? Yeah, obtuse, outside the parentheses. I'm just talking about parallel language. I don't know why--
Okay.
Do you see what I'm talking about?
Good catch, Commissioner.
Why, we got an attorney up here. We're good now. We got all sorts of good stuff going on now.
It's just, I'm just making--
It's great. No, it's, it's all good.
You might say--
We appreciate it.
Keep acute and obtuse outside the parentheses, or keep out the degrees.
I agree, I didn't see it, but I agree now.
Thank you.
Any other typos or other issues anybody has got with that one? Sorry, I'm not demeaning that. I agree, I think it's really good. Signage? You can all guess who brought that one back.
I do have a question on the signage. Is the application form that somebody has to submit, or the application that somebody has to submit submitted in a form, or they can just check the boxes? Or does it require them to make more of an effort to get the permit?
Generally, they have to tell us the dimensions of each of the signs, or one sign if you're just doing one sign, and then tell us which days. So there's a calendar that's usually provided, that you could just circle the days that you're anticipating.
Okay, so they couldn't just say, "I will not put in any signs larger than what the limit is, and check the box?"
They have to provide us actual dimensions.
Okay. And pictures.
And materials.
And materials and pictures.
And location.
Yes. Yeah, all of it.
And this, it strikes me that we have all these limitations imposed on signage. It would be easier if all the applicant had to do was check the box, which essentially recognizes, he now knows what the law is, he's gonna comply with it, rather than having him, but there may be others among us who are much more familiar and have much greater experience in this than I. So we can hear about it, but that's one thing that struck me, and further related to just that issue, is why do they need to say what the material is? Why doesn't the town just say either these materials are excluded, or these materials are the options you have? And then, again, check a box, saying, "I'm using one of these materials."
Because that would change the permit process. Some of you would.
Well, I think it's important, because we're approving what they're proposing. So if they came down the road and changed it to a sign that's out of compliance, we would be able to, we'd be able to reference what was approved at the time they submitted.
Yeah, I mean, it's almost as if the application that they give us is kind of what we sign off on, so it's best when it comes in right the first time on the form itself. And we've had experiences where--
So if they came down the road and changed it to a sign that's out of compliance, we would be able to, we'd be able to reference what was approved at the time they submitted.
Yeah, I mean, it's almost as if the application that they give us is kind of what we sign off on. So it's best when it comes in right the first time on the form itself. And we've had experiences where we've been a little more lenient and kind of, you know, oh, figure out your location or something like that later, we'll, you know, just look at the dimensions and not worry too much if someone's kind of already been in production. And we've found that to not be that effective because then people start coming up with new materials that we never thought of or places we wouldn't have thought of either. So we've found it's just better if they commit to what it is and tell us on the form, then these are a very fast review for us. I mean, they're almost over the counter.
Right, fast review for the staff, but it's more downtime for the applicant. And I'm not suggesting they not be required to comply with the rules. I'm under the impression that all these rules are specific, explicit, there's no room for discretion on part of the staff, you know, to be subjectively decide, oh, that's a pretty sign or not. It seems to me like these are hard and fast rules where it'd be much easier for the applicant to simply say, yes, my sign's going to be less than three by three or whatever the rule is.
I think in a compliance, in the compliance world, it's easier for us to say, well, this is what you've shown us and what you're proposing and you were very specific about what you wanted, as opposed to saying, yeah, I checked a box and I didn't quite know what that meant. And that has happened in, on occasion where we have approved something with specific language that changes what they had in their mind and then they come, have come in with something that doesn't comply with what was originally approved in writing. So I wouldn't say, I mean, we write conditions of approval, but I can't guarantee that everybody reads them and abides, understands them.
And then let me just ask, are any of these rules, do they leave discretion with the staff? Any kind of, do you have any kind of authority to decide that you like this sign or don't like it or?
Nope, they can't discuss content.
It's all quantified, right?
You missed the fun part. We can't regulate content, so.
Location of the signs is definitely, there's just some discretion in determining, I mean, if it meets the criteria, yes, but how do we know that for sure that they understand the criteria if they don't provide us actual documentation? And I would say for, in all of our land use applications, it's more helpful for people to provide us what they want and that we can review it to ensure that it meets our standards to ensure, so that we know that they know exactly what they are proposing.
Let me give you the example, because, you know, you know, no hiding, but I'm the planning commissioner requesting it in case you can figure that out. But, you know, I felt like it got buried when we went through the myriad of sign issues and we potentially lost sight of kind of what we were actually taking action on when we discussed this the first time. And since then, there's been a couple of key issues that have come up and I would start the conversation by saying, the process is actually very simple. It's very straightforward and staff and Carrie are extremely helpful when it comes to what you can and can't do and if you get it wrong on your fir, the application's just one page, it's like four questions. And it's pretty simple and she will help you through it if you mess it up the first time. There's two things that have come to mind, that have come up, at least for me personally, and that is, one, the addition of what we're kind of doing, like, for example, I'll use Quality Automotive and SMOG as the example, where their business is now off frontage. And they do have a sign on the road, but they don't really have a good way to advertise, you know, monthly special or a May special or something like that, maybe via banner or something that's actually visible on Donner Pass Road. You know, an A-frame in a location like that would be very challenging. It just wouldn't be seen, right? You know, and then come to the top picture here, the Safeway Shopping Center, we don't even have a sign in our shopping center. You have no idea what stores are actually in that shopping center. So we're, again, extremely limited on the way that you can advertise. And so specifically on this issue, when we were talking about the material, this was a material question, this was basically saying the temporary banners, it's actually a very durable material that we sort of took out of the, we lost the opportunity to use a material that's easily displayed. And again, this is coming from my opinion, so, you know, you guys can chime in there. But, you know, we limited A-frames to be a certain material back at this meeting as well. And we had a lot of discussion that we could only have wood and brick A-frames or whatever it was, and we couldn't have whiteboard A-frames anymore, even though from 50 feet away, I guarantee you, you can't tell the difference. So to me, this was, this was just a cost of doing business that I felt we overstepped our, we sort of overstepped our decision-making and we put too much, too much regulation when we didn't really have an issue. And if you remember the slide that Carrie showed at the time, I think there were like 10 businesses on there that had applied for a special temporary sign permit. So we're not talking about 100 businesses in town, you know, putting up signage like that. So I wanted to bring that back for discussion. The second piece I bring up, which has been very interesting and came up more recently, and I don't know how Carrie's been dealing with it, but it is some of the election signs. You see Measure AA signs all over downtown. Those are temporary banner signs, right, for all intents and purposes. You see a lot of, you know, other campaign banner signs that are, you know, fairly tasteful, whether you agree with it or not, but they're not obtrusive and currently those would not be allowed. So, you know, whether or not, I guess it's a conversation, do we, do we want signage like that or not? But there's, at the very least, my perspective on it is that it allows our businesses to be a little bit more flexible and our civic organizations to be a little bit more flexible in the way that they advertise, as long as they're still adhering to the temporary sign permit regulations. So that's where this kind of came from.
You just need to get a van and brand it and set it.
Yeah, so that's a whole nother issue that I'm sure will be coming back to us at some point. No, we're not allowed to deal with that one, huh? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the challenge with that really is free speech and, you know, it's.
He can park his van wherever he wants.
The only thing we can regulate is if the sign is somehow mounted onto, so it gets rid of sort of the, you know, Vegas strip taxis that have all the signs kind of posted on top, but it doesn't fix the Zuri Coffee or the, yeah, California 89.
Yeah, so, you know, so at least from a business perspective, this was a small token gesture to enable our businesses to be a little bit more flexible, rather than saying, no, we can't have any banners anymore. You gotta have your A-frame has to be, you know, made out of brick or wood or whatever. You know, and just kind of this, in my opinion, an overburdened business climate is what I would say.
I'm a little disappointed I have to give up my brick A-frame startup business, but.
I was already on that, geez. It's only going to go off here in Truckee though, so it wouldn't be very successful. So anyway, any questions, any more commentary? What do you guys all think? You can tell where I stand, where I would like to, A, re-insert the allowances for temporary banners and get rid of that, the current, which we've changed to the 30 days prior to and 30 days after a business opens. Just because that was sort of, I didn't get that anyway at the time, but.
Sounds good.
Yep, down there. Yeah, we're okay with that. Okay. And then we have eight, nine, and 10, so all the cleanup amendments. Any questions on the cleanup amendments?
Is there a difference between expiration and, no, exercise and commence? In section 18.84.050A3, the second sentence uses the word commence, the third sentence uses the word exercise. If we go down to A3, the one that's, the new language, and the second sentence says, the conditions of approval for the use permit or minor use permit shall specify a timeframe under which the approved use shall commence. Next sentence, if the use is not exercised within the identified timeframe, the project shall be deemed to be out of compliance with the approved condition of approval.
I think we're using that interchangeably, but we could change that so it says. I mean, I think in implementation commence, we've said you have to actually initiate, which is the start. So I think we have made some distinction in that. I was just going to check our development code definitions to see if we had anything.
Okay, so why wouldn't it be, why wouldn't the next sentence then be, if the use is not commenced within the identified time period?
I think we could change that unless Daniel thinks that exercised is important to have in there. I mean, I'm pretty sure we duplicated this language from another section of the code and the exercised, so if you had a development permit, for example, and it had a two-year lifespan, the exercise has to happen within that two years, which is different than the commence date. So, I mean, we can clean it up, I think, if we want to be more explicit and refined so that the expectation is very set.
Exercise doesn't mean complete, does it?
No.
Okay, so I guess if exercise is meant to be different than commence?
Yeah, it's one of those things where there's enough discretion in there that we can use it when we, when we think it's appropriate to kind of say, yes, you've started and exercised, you've been actively doing things since you've started, because we have run into issues in the past where someone has maybe pulled the permit but hasn't really done anything other than pull a permit. So technically it's commenced, but they haven't put a foundation in the ground and moved forward with it and progressed, which is how we've treated the word exercise.
Right, you typically don't invest until you pull your permit and I think that's why we have the distinction in there.
Yeah.
Okay, it's, I was wondering maybe commence means the guy, he's going to, the guy or the man or woman's going to say, well, I drove my truck out there and pulled my tools out, I've commenced. And you're going to come back and say, well, wait, but you really haven't exercised it yet. I mean, this allows you to come back and say, that's not enough, you have to exercise it. And then we fight over that.
Have you been a part of one of those fights or two over your time?
I've just answered my question, never mind.
Would you like to see a change to that one? What was the summary?
I don't think so. I think exercise allows the.
The discretion, yeah.
A little more discretion for the staff.
Okay.
It avoids the technical commencement that's really substantively meaningless. And it's very creative about getting around the difference between expiration and revocation, the solution, expiration, revocation. Okay, that's.
Can we talk about campaign signs?
Oh, yeah. It's ban them all. Seriously, I'm okay with it. Yes, that would make all of our campaigns less expensive.
I just think we might want to consider some additional cleanup amendments. No offense to anyone in the room, lovely people. I counted 147 signs from the bottom of Tahoe Donner to Shusing. There, we've got to do better than this. It's the waste of resources, I can't even believe, I've never seen anything like it. And I don't know what the law is on it. And I know it's a tradition, but I, maybe we need to limit where they're placed, maybe we, it's pollution.
They should at least be all biodegradable.
Made of brick, yeah.
Or brick.
I don't think, I mean, really what it's going to come down to, an enforcement issue, right? If we try to put anything, I mean, I totally agree, trust me. There should be, you know, a minimum of 250 feet in between same, same sign or something like that, right?
There's 25 spacing.
Right.
Between the same sign down Glenshire Drive.
You're talking to people who are doing it, so trust me, we know.
How are, how are any regulations with election signs enforced?
Carrie.
There are code compliance officers.
And what does she do, like, go bug Dave or does she pull them out or?
I would say with more egregious violators, she would likely contact them, but, you know, recognizing the volume this year, there's probably a lot that's out of compliance and we simply have one person and not the capability to do rigid enforcement.
But what is the enforcement?
Oh, she would likely, I think her first step would be to contact the campaign first. If it, yeah, at the end of, long term, if it's in public right of way and it's causing a traffic visibility issue, then we can pull that.
Yeah, we used to have a corral in the back where we would hold signs captive until they were back to their owners.
That was actually going to be one of my comments, was can we at least keep the signs that you pull because those do cost a lot of money.
We do keep them.
Oh, that's good.
For the owner to come pick them up.
Oh, that's nice, good.
They're kind of worthless after November, aren't they?
Unless you lose and want to run again and you didn't put the year on there, yeah.
So there is no distance rule about a particular campaign having to have a minimum distance?
No, I mean, that would get into the realm of reading content.
No, it would be time, place, and manner.
Well, it would be, if you have a certain amount of clusters of, if you want to designate certain clusters of intersections that you would allow them, but if you're saying that one candidate can't have a sign 250 yards, feet away from their other sign, then you're reading their content and you're.
I'm telling them the place where they can go. They can put their own signs every 250 feet apart from one another. That would be a place restriction.
Our compliance officer would have to read that to ensure that it is the same candidate that is placing it 250 feet away.
Right, oh, yeah, for sure.
And you're saying that's a content issue because they actually have to read the sign to determine its location, to determine that it's the same sign?
Are there specified areas they can go or can make?
Any place restriction, you have to read it to figure out who it belongs to.
Yeah, that's weird.
It gets really sticky. We have a friendly handout that we can provide to candidates and I think it just depends on if they ask us, I'm not sure if Judy puts this in the packet automatically, but you can't put them in the roundabouts, you can't put them on utility poles, snow poles, within the towns. Right of way has some, you know, allowances, as long as it's not blocking visibility and then there's some certain time restrictions for that. So we do have some guidance that we give as a handout to complement the restrictive language that we have in here. But, yeah, I mean, you could definitely make a recommendation to say that, you know, this is inconsistent with the town's sustainability goals and have council consider that. I mean, it's, this is just something that we're proposing to make explicit where we've had more in a handout method right now, but there are other alternatives you could look at.
Commissioner Zabriski, you're asking if we can limit the spacing or spacing on them and you're saying no?
What I'm asking now is that you talk with town council about whether it's legal to go ahead and impose a spacing requirement on a particular campaign's signs. I suspect it is, that it doesn't have anything to do with what the sign says, it's simply that particular campaign cannot have, cannot crowd their signs closer than 250.
It would have to be committee of that campaign based is what it would be, right?
But I don't think the First Amendment's an impediment requiring spacing.
And Commissioner Zabriski, when you say council, you mean C-O-U-N-S-E-L?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if anything, we can discuss, we can have that as another point of discussion for councils to consider.
I mean, I'm totally with you, to be honest, and I think it would be, you know, it could be a general plan conversation really as part of a sustainability goal if we were going to go, you know, to that step.
I think that's a great step.
And so maybe we push that off and we, and we're in agreement on what's being presented to us tonight, at least in the, in the near term? Unless somebody who's in the audience gives them time before we go ahead and just ban election signs altogether.
I don't think that, I think it should be a conversation and it should be something that we work to do better at.
Yeah. I think many of us would agree with you who have campaign signs, at least me. So we're good on the campaign signs? Yeah? Yes, okay. Oh, yeah, and this one. So one comment I had was, generally, I'm actually okay with the original concept. I'll start us off here. I'm okay with the downtown study area and at the very least, if we're going to come back to the historic preservation overlay district, I would recommend that maybe we want to also add the rail yard master plan district. I think we're going to have some interesting corners and blocks there. Can we do that or no?
So the rail yard is required to have its own master sign plan and we've been less than successful at getting that at this point, but I think we're trying to implement it on a project by project basis so that at least for. for that project, they're identifying all of their signs. But there's enough flexibility for them. I think that they don't probably need these special, to be included in this special grouping because they are subject to a master plan that has that defined for them to do a master sign plan.
Like the rail yard itself has to do a master sign plan?
That's supposed to happen. But as you've seen, we have approved some projects that don't necessarily have the signs in place. And so one of the things that we're trying to work through is how to address that now that we've got two approved projects and three on the books.
And that was going to be one of my other questions was, I don't even recall us approving a sign on the Artist's Loss Project. Did they not even have a sign?
They didn't have one.
They didn't even have a sign?
No.
Wow. Interesting. So you're saying the rail yard extra doesn't really matter at this point? Okay. Does anybody feel strongly one way or the other on this one? Do you feel strongly that it should be limited to the historic preservation overlay district?
It's, yeah, I guess I don't really have the full, I think it's fine to limit it a bit to the historical preservation district.
All right. I'll take that, that will, we'll give that one the thumbs up. And does anybody have any concerns or questions with this one? I'm thumbs up on this one, too. Yeah? Okay.
So would you like us to provide you a summary of sort of your direction so far in case someone was ready to make a motion?
Yeah, I think we got one more. Not done yet.
Once you're done with that.
And I think on the light, we're good on the billboards and the lighting. I would, are we all good? Yeah. Okay. Yes. Summary us up, please.
You're pulling the second unit section out of this resolution. You're amending the height measurement language from 47 feet to 42 feet. You're changing the obtuse and putting that in parentheses. And I believe that is all your, oh, and you're adding fuels reduction within the development envelope definition. And as for the remaining items, I believe you are proposing to recommend approval as proposed.
With the cleanup to the map language that Jan pointed out. And then also asking council to consider some spacing limitations for political signs.
Not only spacing, but just...
The signs in general, placing the signs.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution 201819 recommending approval of the town council, approval of the town council, 2018 Development Code amendments for Donner Lake development standards, amendments to recorded maps, development envelopes, single-family dwelling setbacks, rear setbacks, height requirements, temporary banners, and the cleanup amendments and the recommend, oh, and recommending the amendment to be exempt from SEQA and including the cleanup discussion that we just had.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gatto?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Commissioner Zabriski?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Polovy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Woo. That was a good one. Staff reports.
All right. While Jen is pulling some information up, I thought I would just touch on our meeting minutes because I had some questions. And you may have noticed that they're not as verbatim as they were before. And that was strategic on our part to try and pull back on the time spent putting those together. And we've used a similar process in the past and use them right now for H-PAC. It really does take a lot of our staff time, Emily's time, to do the minutes verbatim because you have to go back and listen to the tapes where if we're better able to summarize topics, it helps us just save a lot of time. And we're shifting right now so that we can focus on doing the general plan update. And we're having to kind of cut some areas that we hadn't cut in the past. So that's the reasoning for it. And if you do want to, when you're talking through issues, say, you know, I really like this reflected in the record, then that will help us know things that are really important to you specifically to be called out. We can still do that. So it's not to limit your ability to have any, you know, positions that you want reflected in the minutes. It's really just an opportunity for us to scale back on how much time we're spending on capturing everything that was said.
I thought it worked really well this time. I don't know if it will on other occasions, but it's nice for you to point out that we should state when we want to make sure something we say is in the record.
And we'll try and gauge as staff, too. If we have something that we know is going to be controversial, those are times when we probably will take a little bit more time to work through those. We're trying to scale back on the things that we think are not going to be as controversial so that we have a better balance in that. But definitely, if there's something that you want expressed in the minutes, let us know and we'll make sure they're in there.
And I'll just add, I sort of noticed it, and I don't know how you guys feel, it was the general commissioner questions was kind of what I specifically noticed and didn't know how the rest of the commission members felt about that just being sort of vague and general rather than identifying who was asking what questions. More for a matter of the public record, so the public, you know, sees the engagement or not therein of a specific commissioner on a specific topic or not so that there could be follow-up, you know, and I didn't know. And what I also had a question was, is council moving to the same style or no, that's just for us?
The council minutes are about a half a page, even for really controversial issues. They do not spend any time going over the minutes in detail like we do. And part of it's just because it's more business as usual. It's these land use topics that tend to have more intricacies to them. And that's why our minutes have always been a little bit longer. But we are even at this kind of cut back, scaled back version, much longer than what council has for theirs.
Cool. Thank you.
Okay, so upcoming commission agenda items. So we'll have the Public Service Center back on for November. We will have our first cannabis delivery service business requesting a use permit. We've got the Mardis Valley Quarry update. And then we potentially have the West End Coffee and Tap Project, but we're still trying to determine if that's ready. So looking at for sure three, possibly four items for that night.
And then just one other thing. So Jen is working on scheduling our first GPAC meeting, so that will be kind of finalized in the near future. And then we are working on the House Truckee First Strategy Workshop. So we have our consultant onboard. We've had our first discussion about that. And the dates are hovering right now between November 28th and 29th. It's that Wednesday, Thursday of the last week of November. We really wanted to use that as sort of a kickoff for us to be able to get that information, get the discussion going within the community. And then shortly after that, we should have some background information put together from our consultants in their, what they call their existing conditions report. So that's in full swing. So stuff's happening on general plan, may not be quite out in the public's view yet, but there's a lot of work going on.
Great. Thank you. Any commissioners or reports? No? Awesome. Thank you. We are adjourned.